Good evening. I am Cecilia Taylor and welcome to the City Council's February 13th Special and Regular City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. Please note public comment speaker time may be limited. I would like to introduce our city council members and staff present. Councilmember Betsy Nash, Councilmember Maria Dorr, and Councilmember Jen Woolison. City staff present, City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Nira Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Taylor. And again echoing a welcome to our February 13th Special and Regular City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for comment on that item you wish to speak on, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, you can press star nine at that time. That concludes my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you Ms. Heron. Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members under city council members report. Staff will be providing an update to consent calendar item K6 related to the planning commission stipend. Does the city council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or information items for discussion to be heard after the last regular business item M1? Councilmember Woolison.
Thank you Mayor Taylor. I'm going to wish to discuss K4, Community Funding Subcommittee Recommendations.
Thank you. Does the city council desire to modify the order of any agenda item? And I'd like to welcome Vice Mayor Combs to the meeting. The next item is closed session. Item D. City Clerk Heron, can you please call for public comment for closed session item D1 and D2?
Yes, thank you Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our closed session items, D1 Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation, or D2 Conference with Legal Counsel: Existing Litigation, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, you can engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or cell phone, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our closed session items, D1 and D2. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you Ms. Heron. Arrangement to closed session. The city council will adjourn this meeting and reconvene in closed session. We will reconvene the regular meeting no later than 6:00 PM and anticipated reconvening no later than 6:30 PM. Thank you.
All right, having our city council back at our in-person dais. Mayor Taylor, you may recall the meeting to order.
Thank you. Hello, I am Cecilia Taylor, Mayor of Menlo Park and I would like to recall our meeting to order for the City Council's February 13th regular and special meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with city council, city staff, and members of the public participating in city council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited. Roll call. I would like to introduce city council members present and staff. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, city council members Maria Dorr, Betsy Nash, and Jen Woolison. Staff president present include city manager Justin Murphy, assistant city manager Stephen Stolte, city attorney Nira Doherty, and city clerk Judy Heron. City clerk Heron, would you please provide instructions to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Taylor. Again echoing a welcome to our February 13th special and regular meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, if you are participating in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, after the mayor calls for public comment on the item you wish to speak, we ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landliner or a cell phone, you can press star nine at that time. That does conclude my instructions. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you Ms. Heron. Next item is G, report from closed session. I would like to introduce our city attorney, Nira Doherty, for a report out from closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one item to report out on. The city has accepted a settlement offer, an agreement, from the plaintiffs in the Coonsy versus City of Menlo Park case. The agreement requires the Coonsys to dismiss their lawsuit, adhere to certain conditions of the original county dangerous dog designation order until August 2024. The city will also be indemnified through the agreement.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is agenda review. I would like to reopen agenda review. This item provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from city council members under city council member reports. Staff will be providing an update to consent calendar item K6 related to the planning commission stipend. Does the city council wish to pull any items from consent calendar or informational items from the discussion to be heard after the last regular business item M1? And city council member Jen Woolison is pulling?
I believe it's K4.
Does any other council member have any items they would like to pull or modify on the agenda? Thank you. The next item is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on our agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on any item not listed on our agenda and therefore the city council cannot respond to non-agenda items or issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the city council on the following items: presentations and proclamations, advisory body vacancies and appointments, consent calendar items, public hearing, regular business and information items. City clerk Heron, can you call for general public comment?
Yes, thank you Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landliner or cell phone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you Ms. Heron. The next item is item I, presentations and proclamations. We have two presentations and one proclamation this evening. City clerk Heron, do we have any public comment on item I1, proclamation for Black History Month?
Thank you Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our proclamation I1, Black History Month, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If calling in from a landliner or cell phone, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our proclamation I1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Black History Month was created to focus attention on the contributions of African-Americans to the United States. It honors all black people from all periods of the United States history, from the enslaved people first brought over from Africa in the early 17th century to African-Americans living in the United States today. Since 1976, every U.S. president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. Other countries around the world, including Canada and the United Kingdom, also devote a month to celebrating Black History. During Black History Month, we honor and continue the work of Black and African-Americans who have created a more fair and inclusive democracy, helping our nation move closer to the realization of its full promise and potential for everyone. The city of Menlo Park continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all persons, past, present, and future, are respected, valued equally, and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the city, the state, and the country, and the world. This is a summary of the proclamation. The full proclamation is in the agenda. The next item is presentation. The first presentation is I2, the youth poster exhibition. Here to make the presentation is library and community services manager Natalia Jones.
Good evening. So in, on the slideshow in front of you, you'll see examples of the youth poster exhibition that we held this past month, and it was in reference to Black History Month. The theme of this year's Black History Month was African-Americans in the arts. And so we had children that go to school in Menlo Park from kindergarten through 12th grade submit their ideas that came into their mind when they hear African-American, African-Americans in the arts. So we had 171 submissions from kindergarten through 12th grade. You'll see in some of these drawings or posters, you know, we had musicians such as B.B. King and Michael Jackson, actors like Denzel Washington, Queen Latifah, and so it was just a mix. And they, they were very creative in what they, what they came up with. And so all of these posters are exhibited right now at the library and they will be up until on our proclamation I1, Black History Month, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our proclamation I1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. Black History Month was created to focus attention on the contributions of African Americans to the United States. It honors all black people from all periods of the United States history, from the enslaved people first brought over from Africa in the early 17th century to African Americans living in the United States today. Since 1976, every U.S. president has officially designated the month of February as Black History Month. Other countries around the world, including Canada and the United Kingdom, also devote a month to celebrating Black History. During Black History Month, we honor and continue the work of black and African Americans who have created a more fair and inclusive democracy, helping our nation move closer to the realization of its full promise and potential for everyone. The city of Menlo Park continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all persons, past, present, and future, are respected, valued equally, and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the city, the state, and the country, and the world. This is a summary of the proclamation. The full proclamation is in the agenda. The next item is Presentation. The first presentation is I2, The Youth Poster Exhibition. Here to make the presentation is Library and Community Services Manager Natalia Jones.
Good evening. So in, on the slideshow in front of you, you'll see examples of the youth poster exhibition that we held this past month, and it was in reference to Black History Month. The theme of this year's Black History Month was African Americans in the Arts. And so we had children that go to school in Menlo Park from kindergarten through 12th grade, submit their ideas that came into their mind when they hear African American, African Americans in the arts. So we had 171 submissions from kindergarten through 12th grade. You'll see in some of these drawings or posters, you know, we had musicians such as Bibi King and Michael Jackson, actors like Denzel Washington, Queen Latifah. And so it was just a mix. And they, they were very creative in what they, what they came up with. And so all of these posters are exhibited right now at the library, and they will be up until the end of the month. So please go over there, and you can see them in person. We also have these digitally uploaded onto the city of Menlo Park's website, so you can also see them there. But please take a look at them, and yeah, they did a great job.
Thank you. Can you tell us how many, how many youth won?
So there were four outstanding works. We thanked all of the children and appreciated all of their works. But there were four outstanding works, one in each category of kinder through second grade, third through fifth grade, sixth through eighth grade, and then the high school category.
Thank you. And I think Councilmember Dorr, did you have a question? I thought you raised your hand. All right. Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Our final presentation this evening is I3, The Presentation from the American Public Works Association Accreditation. Here to make the presentation is Region Eight Director.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Taylor, Honorable Counsel. My name is Juman Pakbor. I represent 5,000 public works professionals in California, Nevada, and Hawaii. And this is one of my favorite things to do. I started out my career in Contra Costa County, on the other side of the bay, and, but I actually grew up in San Mateo, went to high school and played basketball. And so this is coming home. This is, this is, I'm really excited to be here, to be quite frank. I started out in the Public Works Department about 30 years ago. And the question back then is the same question now that remains, which is, is your Public Works Department doing a good job? Are they meeting the needs of your citizens? Are they meeting the needs of you decision-makers? And you, as, as the council and the citizens of Menlo Park, know when the Public Works Department is not doing their good job. Water leaks, the storm drains are clogged up, streets are not paved. So you get the calls, the Public Works Department gets the calls, when things go wrong. But when things are going well, no one calls. Everything just comes along. Your water, when you open up your tap, water flows. Your water isn't backed up. You can get to your work without any pothole repairs. So how do you know, as the council, as the decision-makers, for the citizens of Menlo Park, if your Public Works Department is doing a good job or not? I'm here tonight to tell you that they're doing an amazing job. And let me explain that. There's an accreditation process through the American Public Works Association. It's a 35,000-member organization throughout all of North America, the United States and Canada. And we represent public works agencies. And this accreditation process is not just a checkbox, not something you just mail in. It's years and years in the making. It's extremely tough. There is 16 agencies in California that are accredited. Just 16. Hundreds apply for this accreditation, and only 16 achieve it. And your Public Works Department was able to achieve it. We send in experts, so it's just not a mail-in, you know, self-accreditation. We have people come in here and look at your policies, look at your procedures, make sure that you're actually doing what you're saying, what your department is saying they're doing. And they passed 95%, at the 95 percentile, which is amazing. It's, it's an absolutely amazing feat. What we've also taken back from Menlo Park to be able to share with others throughout the United States and Canada are five model practices. So your, your agency, your, your department was doing these practices so well that we're taking those back. And we're telling them it's coming from Menlo Park, but we're taking it and we're sharing it with other public works agencies throughout the nation and Canada. I wanted to congratulate Deputy City Manager Nagaya and Public Works Director Mitch on, in this amazing achievement. And it's, it's one of, like I said, it's one of my favorite things to do because I get to share with decision-makers how well your Public Works Department is doing. So congratulations.
Okay then.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. I know precious time on the agenda, so I will be very brief. But I did just want to also give a thank you and a shout out to Maddie Godinez, who's one of our staff in the Public Works Department, an admin assistant. She's been with us about four years now and really just helped us get through this process with tremendous organization skills and coordination across all the different topic areas. So we're really excited to be meeting this milestone. It's been a goal for a number of years now. We had lunch with the department to celebrate today as well and are really happy to welcome Mr. Pakbor here tonight and receive this award.
Councilmember Woolison?
I just wanted to thank you so much for coming here to share this news. I actually started feeling a little emotional about our Public Works Department. And it's funny, when you, I didn't know it was a rhetorical question, or the question you asked, how do you know when your Public Works Department is doing a good job? I was thinking, we don't get angry calls and emails from our constituents. But I usually don't get angry calls and emails from constituents. And especially the way the Public Works has reacted to the storms recently, it's really a heroic effort. And so we're so grateful for the leadership of the department, for all the frontline workers who are out there in the rain and who work tirelessly. And we are, I know, I'm speaking for all of us, I think thrilled that you're getting this recognition because a lot of the work you do goes unseen until, like you said, there is a major thing happening. But we see you tonight, and thank you for elevating their work. Thank you.
Thank you. And one item that I did miss was to call for public comment on this item. Ms. Heron, can you call for public comment on I3?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Item I3, Presentation from the American Public Works Association Accreditation, if you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on our presentation, Item I3. No hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. And just wanted to say another round of thank you and Mr. Pakbor for coming and presenting the wonderful accommodations to our Public Works Department under this leadership of Mr. Nagaya. And just as a reminder, our city manager did come from the Public Works Department. So I'm sure your leadership had some contributions to this. So thank you all. Thank your team as well. The next item on our agenda is Item J, Advisory Body Vacancies and Appointments. We are considering applicants and making appointments to fill vacancies on the library commission. Here to introduce, introduce this item is City Clerk Heron.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So yes, the item before the city council is to fill two vacancies on our library commission. The first vacancy will expire April 30th of 2024, so this April. And the second will expire April 30th of 2025. The library recruitment involved a period of advertisements and announcements from December of 2023 through January 26. I would like to note that applicant Amisha Oza did withdraw their application from the library commission. So we do have the four remaining candidates. And I would also like to point out that the city council can also direct that we fill the expiring term of April 30th of 2024 this year for a full regular term through April of 2028. But that is just an option. Otherwise, whoever is appointed to an April 30th of 2024 expiring term will have an opportunity to reapply for the regular term at the end of April. And that does conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any questions or open it up to public comment.
Let's open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our special business item J1, consider applicants and make appointments to fill vacancies on the library commission. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on Agenda Item J1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron.
And actually, I can probably just fill in how we can handle the appointment process. So the city council, I would recommend first deciding whether to fill the unexpired term through April of this year or filling that term through April of 2028. And then we can go to filling those two vacancies. Once again, we can either do it by roll call vote with most commonly used first names, or we can do a secret ballot, depending on the city council's direction.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And I'm interested in filling the position until 2028. I think we have agreement for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And so with that, let us begin with filling that vacancy for the one expired term, which will now be a full term through April 30th of 2028. I will say that the applicants who did apply knew that they were going for both the expiring 2024 and 2025 appointment. So if there is an issue with appointing them through the 2028, I'll return this item to city council, probably with annual recruitment. And so are we going to go with secret ballot? Or do we want to go roll call vote by order of most commonly used first name?
Roll call vote.
Thank you. So I will start with City Councilmember Nash, your candidate for the expiring term of April of 2028. Michael Herrick. Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs.
Michael Herrick.
Thank you. City Councilmember Woolison.
Michael Herrick.
Thank you. City Councilmember Dower.
Michael Herrick.
Thank you. And Mayor Taylor.
Michael Herrick.
Thank you. And so by unanimous decision, the city council will be appointing Michael Herrick to a term ending April 30th of 2028. Congratulations, Michael. You'll be hearing from me probably tomorrow. And with that, I will move down to... There we go. Perfect. All right, so now we're going to be filling an expiring term of April of 2025 with our three remaining. I will again go down the list. City Councilmember Nash.
David Pollak.
Thank you. City Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Combs.
Meg Marks.
Thank you. City Councilmember Woolison.
David Pollak.
Thank you. City Councilmember Dower.
Meg Marks.
Thank you. And Mayor Taylor.
David Pollak.
Okay, and with three votes, the city council is appointing David Pollak to the library commission, a term ending in April of 2025. Congratulations, David. You'll also be hearing from me tomorrow.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and congratulations to our new commissioners. Next item is Item K, Consent Calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. I would like to just quickly note the update I have for K6 before going to public comment. I apologize that I didn't bring that up sooner in the notes. So for the city council members of the public, I wanted to provide an update to the policy related to Item K6, which is adopt a resolution amending the city council policy, authorizing a stipend for planning commission. Just updated the language to clarify that the government code does allow a city to pay appointed planning commissioners by resolution, and that the city council has the opportunity to adopt a resolution for an amount not to exceed $200 per month per planning commissioner. The original language just didn't make that extremely clear. Okay, and so with that, I will now open it up to public comment. So for any member of the public who wishes to speak on our consent calendar items, K1, City Council Meeting Minutes, K2, Adoption of an Ordinance Related to Tobacco Retailer Permit, K3, Adopt a Resolution for the Destruction of Obsolete Records, K4, the City Council Community Funding Subcommittee's Recommendations, K5, a resolution authorizing applications for Lifeline Transportation Program, and K6, City Council Policy Update for Planning Commission Stipends. If you are participating in person and haven't already, please complete a speaker card at the back table, return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner or cellphone, please press star nine now. I currently have three speakers for our consent calendar. So this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items K1 through K6. Okay, so we have a total of four speakers. And I will begin with the two that I received earlier. So the first one is going to be Edward Schlesinger, speaking on K2.
Good evening, city council, city staff. My name is Edward Schlesinger, and I'm speaking on behalf of the San Mateo County Tobacco Education Coalition. And we want to thank the council and staff for making our county a healthier place to live and for separating the tobacco retail ordinance from the upcoming smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinance. And a quick update about our work. Breathe California and Youth Leadership Institute are developing a public survey to gauge Menlo Park residents about their experiences with secondhand smoke. And we will share the results with you and use this data to guide our ordinance recommendations. And we know already there is demand for smoke-free public housing, excuse me, smoke-free housing. We've learned in your 2022 Environmental Justice Element Report, Menlo Park residents in public focus group meetings indicated smoke-free multi-unit housing was, quote, "should be addressed", and no smoking policies could, quote, "help the community improve physical activity." If you have any questions, Gloria from the San Mateo County Health Department, she couldn't be here tonight, she's not well, but her contact information is there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Edward. Our next speaker will be Melissa Luckin, followed by Lynn Bramlett. And Melissa is speaking on Item K4.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Taylor and members of the council. My name's Melissa Luckin. I'm the executive director of Rebuilding Together Peninsula, and I'm just here to thank you for your past support of our work and to give you a very quick up... thank you for your past support of our work and to give you a very quick update on our progress to date. We've so far completed two home repairs under the current BMR contract for folks in Menlo Park and are on track for doing four more as part of our volunteer-driven project this spring, when we'll have about 60 to 100 volunteers spread out across the the city to provide critical safety and health-related repairs. And we expect to complete the remaining two projects this fall. So with your support, the repairs would otherwise, it would be out of reach for Menlo Park homeowners whose average income this past year has been $28,000, has been made a reality, and both of them identified as elderly and one with a disability. We were able to perform a variety of repairs and plan to do more in the way of minor home repairs, including grab bars and smoke detector installations, as well as larger things like major debris removal and sink and window replacements and cabinets and countertops and all that sort of thing. So the type of repair requests that we receive are reflective of a significantly aging housing stock, and hence our request for $10,000 that would allow us to expand our impact by doing even more minor home repairs, not in our current area of Bellhaven under the BMR contract, or deeper repairs for those eight that we are working on. So I just wanted to thank you for your support. Thanks.
Thank you, Melissa. Our next speaker will be Lynn Bramlett, followed by Latrice Taylor. And Lynn, if you can let us know which item you'll be speaking on.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and honorable counsel. I'm speaking on item the four, the same one the prior woman just spoke about. So I'm Lynn Bramlett, Executive Director and a founding member of MPC Ready, which stands for Menlo Park Community Ready. I would appear in person, but I am out of town. For the organization, I thank the council and staff for considering our requests for $4,000 in funding at today's meeting. MPC Ready has three main priorities. Advancing a cost-effective whole-of-community disaster preparedness partnership based on national and state policies and best practices. Fostering community-wide awareness of the need to prepare for disasters, and the motivation, knowledge, and skills to actually do the work. Third, building prepared neighborhoods where neighbors are socially connected and ready to be self-sufficient for at least two weeks following a major disaster, where roads, water, utilities, cell, and other infrastructures may be disrupted for weeks or longer, and where ATMs and banks might be closed, stores out of stock of needed supplies, and where local hospitals may be damaged and/or prioritizing medical care, along with the situation where the professional first responders are overwhelmed and they need to prioritize their response. MPC Ready is entirely volunteer-run by people living within the Menlo Park zip code. Many of us also have deeper connections in our community, which will be quite helpful towards broader disaster preparedness. The funding and the recognition from the city would significantly help MPC Ready advance its work to build prepared neighborhoods with also the ability to use two-way radio communications. I also, in closing, invite anyone wanting to learn more to reach out to me personally at lynn@mpcready.org, or visit our website at www.mpcready.org. We are a welcoming and inclusive community, and we appreciate your support. Thank you again.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next speaker will be Latrice Taylor, speaking on item K4.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and City of Menlo Park council members. I am Latrice Taylor, Senior Director of Programs and Services with Samaritan House. For 50 years, Samaritan House has been in existence, leading the fight against poverty in San Mateo County. But let it be known, our founder, Dr. Cora Clemmons, an African-American woman who received her doctorate at the age of 60 from Stanford as a public health nurse, started the work of Samaritan House right here in Menlo Park on Terminal Avenue. She founded a food pantry in her home when she realized there were mothers and children who were food insecure 50 years ago to this very year. So from humble beginnings, now we're serving over 26,000 individuals, which equates to about over 10,000 households in the fiscal year of 2023, 2024. And out of that, 540 Menlo Park residents, which equates to about 233 households, that have been served right here in Menlo Park. Our programs are located throughout the county, and we do provide services such as two free clinics, three shelters, a kid's closet, financial empowerment, and our largest program, food services, which is right where we started. We provide meals to our seniors, to schools, to any partner agency if they're willing to come pick up a hot meal, or snacks, or whatever, even just bottled water. We can provide it for free, and everything I talk about is for free. Even our medical professionals, when they do street medicine for those who are unhoused, they come and get bag lunches from us. And after taking care of someone on the street, they leave that person with a bag lunch so that they can have a full stomach by the end of the day. We have been assisted by the city in years past, especially with rental assistance and other financial assistance, and we thank you so much for the support that the City of Menlo Park has given to Samaritan House. And we look forward to a continued partnership as we work together to serve the residents right here in Menlo Park. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Latrice. Mayor Taylor, we did have an additional hand go up after the close of public comment for consent. Would you like me to reopen public comment?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So we'll be taking our final speaker, Jordan Pascal. And if you could, Jordan, let us know which item you are speaking on.
Good evening. I am speaking on the same item K4.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead, Jordy.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor Taylor and the City of Menlo Park council members for allowing me into the space tonight. My name is Jordy Pascal, and I manage the County of San Mateo Jobs for Youth Program. Now, the County of San Mateo Jobs for Youth Program supports youth ages 14 through 21 through our three pillars of success. Career and professional development workshops, connecting youth to employment and volunteer opportunities in their local community, and access to an annual scholarship fund for higher education. Recognizing that low-income jobs for youth participants needed support to achieve their higher education and vocational goals, Altelia created the JFY Scholarship Program in 2005. The JFY Altelia Scholarship Program was built to help alleviate financial challenges for youth and their families as they embark on their education journey. With the City of Menlo Park's help, we can help more youth in need pursue their higher education dreams. We are so grateful to the City of Menlo Park's previous support and recognizing the need of equity and inclusion in higher education. Thank you so much for your consideration and your time this evening.
Thank you for your comment, Jordy. And that does conclude public comment for our consent calendar. So Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Aaron, and thank you for everyone that provided public comment on K4 and also on K2. Now bring it back to the dais and to Councilmember Woolison that pulled item K4.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So I asked to pull item K4, and I first just want to thank all of the public speakers and especially all of the applicants who are working with such incredible organizations in our community and doing really wonderful work on behalf of so many. I also want to thank our subcommittee and our staff for all the work they have put into this. Unfortunately, at this time, I'm wanting to bifurcate this item from the rest of the consent calendar. I've had longstanding concerns about our community grant program. And at this time, I, those concerns remain, and I feel terrible that I'm bringing this up kind of at the 11th hour. And I want to acknowledge that this is something that I should have discussed when we budgeted the funds. But my questions, when I look through things, and I've been thinking about this for years, and it's just kind of come to a head this year, has to do with the government, the governance of some of these organizations, the financials, the lack of clarity on how many residents are being served by all of these organizations, and the general kind of randomness of who we're working with, how much we're giving. And again, I don't mean this, this has been many years, and I don't mean this as a criticism to anyone who's applying tonight. And this is the last thing, especially after hearing the beautiful testimonies from these incredible organizations. But at this time, without more information on some of these grants, as a steward of our city, I'm having a really hard time, especially given our budget deficit with the, with this program. And so I'm, I'd like to separate this out from the rest of the consent calendar, and thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other comments before we go ahead and approve items K1, K2, K3, K5, and K6? Or Councilmember Dower?
Yes, I had another question, actually, on K4, since it was already pulled. I didn't bring it up myself.
Okay.
Thank you. I was just curious. I'm not sure, sorry, if this was first discussed at the last meeting when I was unable to attend. So I wasn't able to comment there. But I work in, I am a grant maker in my day job, so that's why I'm curious about some things. For some of them, I noticed that they asked for fairly large amounts, and they were, the subcommittee recommendation was quite small. So for the True Light Resources for All, it's, they asked 70, and there's a $1,000 give. Or for Junior League, they asked for 64, and there's $7,500 given. Or So Many Choices Community Project asked for $130,000, and $5,000 were given. And I ask about these because I know, in my experience working with with grantees, that oftentimes when an amount is quite small, it can be very arduous and difficult to put together the grant reports and the funding information. And so I was just curious if I could learn a little bit more.
So a part of, and I believe it's actually in the staff report, the reason that some of the amounts were chosen is based on the size of the budget of the organization. So it's our policy. And one of the comments that I want to make, or I can make it right now, on K4 is actually the policy needs to be updated, and it hasn't been. At the subcommittee meeting, Vice Mayor Combs and I, we decided to bring it to the council as opposed to trying to fix these issues at the subcommittee meeting. That, because this item is on consent calendar, and I can follow up with the city manager, it makes sense to bring it back and update it, to do some work to it, because we did recognize that same issue.
That sounds great.
Yeah, Tal, so I appreciate the feedback on the randomness and the ways in which it might not align or comport to what might be considered standard grant writing processes. There isn't much, though, of an obligation on the part of the entities or organizations receiving to like, report back or provide these extensive reports. So it's not what might happen if you get like a Gates Foundation, like, right, where this is extensive reporting. I think, I think, again, very much supportive of this moving forward. I do think I'm open to looking at ways we can, we can make adjustments here. The idea, though, is that it is somewhat lacks the formality that you might get in other, in other places or situations to encourage people, encourage more organizations, to encourage new organizations, things like MPC Ready, that are very much focused, or have a component that is focused on Menlo Park. I do think, like, one of the things we brought up was this idea of, like, you do have these, like, large ask, and there's no history of us giving very, very large sums. And even some of the, like, when you look at the $10,000 or $20,000, those are two well-established organizations that have a very clear track record. And so we could go and say, like, oh, put in very clear constraints. But then I think, again, there was a concern that, like, we would be adding further restrictions of formality. And so if an organization really feels like they want to ask for $107,000, that, like, they can ask, but certainly if you, if you look at past, you know, past grants, there is no history of any organization receiving that amount of money. And overall, we are generally been working with a budget of about $300,000. But like I said, I think the feedback is valid, and I do think we should, should look at ways we could provide greater formality. If other cities have programs like this, maybe we can look and see how that's done. But, but yeah. I did, though, also wanted to take the opportunity to really thank staff. A lot of, like, work here is done by staff and, and looking through these applications, going back to applicants, and also really providing a space for applicants and sometimes to make corrections. Because, like I say, you could be dealing with very new organizations in some cases. So I do want to thank staff, but also, like I say, want to, you know, to some degree, validate the feedback.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. And City Manager Murphy, bifurcating the consent calendar in. How about we just bifurcate it and then vote and then come back to K4? Does that work?
Yes, Mayor, that would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve everything but K4?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion by City Councilmember Woolison, and it was a second by City Councilmember Nash. Thank you. And this is to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item K4. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting on the screen. Let's try that again. Okay, now you should be able to proceed with the vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Going back to item K4, my recommendation was going to be to include in the motion that this policy is updated. I'm not sure if it makes sense just for Vice Mayor Combs and I to work on it, or what would be the simplest for the city manager, so looking for some direction.
Let's see, so, Mayor, you're in the process of making a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, and you're asking specifically about potential updates to the policy?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it might be trying, trying to balance between what's on tonight's agenda, what's a direction for future. I think it might be, at a certain level, the extent of the potential updates and kind of when to embark on that. And there's kind of been an overall, like, timeline of that. So I think it might be a matter of understanding the scope and breadth of potential updates. Look to the city attorney to see if there can be any discussion about that this evening, or whether we should bring that back for future council discussion. Because I think once we understand the extent of potential changes, that would provide us with the indication of how much work effort there might be related to staff versus council subcommittee, say, working on it by itself and then reporting back to the full council. So part of it depends on how much you're looking for from staff to be involved with this.
Well, I definitely am interested in staff providing a little bit of guidance here. I know that they're just jotted down a few of the concerns from Councilmember Dower and Councilmember Woolison around the governance, the governance of some of the organizations, the financials, and then some clarity around the impact reports. And I do believe that in the applications, which I think were attached to the agenda, that it does provide some information about how many residents in Menlo Park are impacted by the funds. And then for me personally, I mean, I would like to make sure that there are minimal barriers for organizations applying for it, especially those that are smaller in, in the City of Menlo Park specifically. I'm interested in funding from the bottom up as opposed to from the top down. up as opposed to from the top down. And I don't know if there's anything, any other clarity from any of the council members around the update.
No, I would sort of just reiterate, like, big extent to which there are other cities that do something similar. It would be great to see, kind of, get some information about, about those processes. And so, and that can be just staff, like, relaying information more, more than, like, having to actually digest and do a report or anything on that information. And I'm happy to dig in. I do like, again, it would be easy to revert to, like, a scenario in which only the most established organizations get funding. I do like that, that there has been a willingness with this, this grant program to, to look at and provide funds even fairly small, like whether it's 1,000 or 4,000, to very small organizations that are, and even still, there's a requirement to have some wherewithal. I do, I do like that. And so I would be concerned about losing that. But, but like, other than that, like I said, it would just be interesting to see how maybe this is conducted by other, other cities.
Thank you. I want to echo eagerness to see how we can make sure that there are few barriers to access, to apply, and to be considered in this list. I, for one, was surprised that some prominent local organizations weren't listed here, that are community partners and have been showing up to a lot of the city events that I've gotten to attend. And so it makes me wonder, maybe are there barriers that make it more difficult to apply? And also eager to look, as you said, to, to the reporting. Another thing I'm curious about in, in that process is thinking about how are we making sure that the funds that we give out are also maximizing, maximizing impact in some ways, where if we're giving such small grants to some organizations, when they're, say, they ask for, for 10, and they're only getting five, does that mean they can do the actual work that they had intended to do, or they can come up with other five to do that? And I'm sure, and I don't mean to say this at all disrespectfully to the thoughtful work that the subcommittee put into, or the staff into considering these, but it is a question that comes up for me as a, as a grant maker. And so that's a curiosity that would be interesting to understand better in that process.
Councilmember Willison?
I, I appreciate this conversation. I actually think I'm coming from a totally different perspective. I appreciate where you're all coming from. I'm concerned, and this is at no fault of us or our staff or anything, that we lack the, the capacity and expertise and wheelhouse to be an effective grant-making organization. And given our unique role as, again, stewards of taxpayer dollars, I'm concerned that we're in this space, and that there might be some organizations that we already do business with, or that we already fund, that we're funding through this program. And, and I just, so to answer the city manager's question on how deep we want to go in looking to modify this program, where my comfort level would be, and I'm obviously 1 of 5, would be a complete overhaul or elimination, just based on the resource capacity and what the city is here for versus what better-equipped grant-making groups could do. So this is a different perspective. But thank you for letting me share.
Understood. Thank you. Councilmember Nash, and then Vice Mayor Combs.
Thank you. I was actually, well, I very much appreciate and agree with all the comments that have been made up here. Where I was going was, I'm concerned about the staff capacity to rewrite the program, sort of what you were just addressing, and just where this fits with our priorities.
Just in response, I've also had the question of, of like, there are some fairly prominent organizations within the city, or who engage in the city, who we don't see on this list. And to be clear, it's because they don't apply. And, and I remember, like, I have, because from the last psycho, one of the things I said to staff is, you know, what's our sort of marketing engagement strategy or comp strategy? And I do think staff put extra effort in making sure that they reached out to organizations. So a lot didn't, didn't apply, to be clear, because the barrier to entries is very low, which is part of the problem, I think, for, for at least some. I do think, like, I think if the, the idea is that, that the future for a majority of the council to be comfortable with something like that is to implement some of the structure, infrastructure you would see from a, you know, a, an organization that does this day in, day out, I do think that at that moment, we should make a decision to just get out of this, because I don't think that the resources is there, or, or there. And it's not something that, like, we principally have the expertise to do. So it's either we get comfortable to some degree with, like, this approach with a bit more sort of structure and guidelines, or we say that, like, yeah, this, this, this isn't the most effective use of, of our time and our resources for a number of reasons. And I think that that's a valid debate discussion worth having. I can also make a motion.
Thank you.
For us, and, and that would, would be to, to move approval of, I also don't want to, if there's anyone else who has anything to say more broadly.
Yeah, I guess my question is more for the city manager of what direction are you hearing, or what, what can we expect to have staff come back to frame a future conversation about this?
Let's see, I can start, and I'm happy for others to chime in, but I do, I do see that there's probably two different things. One is the actual action on the agenda item, which was whether or not to, to fund per those recommended amounts. It may be, it's good to kind of actually break this into two, two different things. One is on, on that. And then the second is any direction on following up. So if it's, so I can kind of touch on the direction to follow up if there is a desire for a future agenda item to kind of, kind of, without staff doing too much more research, to allow the council to kind of have the, the discussion that you're kind of having now, but in greater, greater depth, we can, we can think about that. Where I'd want to hesitate a little bit is, you know, committing any more staff resources before having that discussion. So I, I think we could probably take something from what we've heard this evening, just to recap that. And I could work with the mayor on finding a time for a future council discussion about that. But I think it sounds like that might be timely to do that, because we'd want to kind of set expectations for the overall community sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I would just add, from my perspective, I'm really supportive of that. And yeah, one of which, limited staff, like, sort of like, work would have to be done, because who knows where the discussion is going to end. But it would be a public forum and discussion, and where then we could also have the stakeholders, like, right, would, would be noticed, and could, to the extent to which they want to come in and participate in that discussion, could do so. And I think that would be more important than any sort of due diligence staff could do, like, a council discussion, and having those stakeholders in the community coming and having a discussion.
I agree. And I don't know if anyone else had any other feedback. So, and I will make a motion to approve item K4.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mayor Taylor, it does look like we've had an additional hand raised. I know we've reopened public comment twice already for consent, deferring to you if we are reopening again. Okay. All right. And so our final speaker will be Julie Shanson. And Julie, if you can confirm which item you are speaking on, please.
Item we're speaking on, please. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can. Great. I just wanted to, I raised my hand because there was a lot of conversation about something I didn't think there was going to be a conversation about. I appreciate that our city gives money to local charities. I think that it's worthy of thinking about how we do that. And it's also really special that the elect, the people we elect consider how and who the money should go to. I sat through, not this year, but last year, the subcommittee meeting, and I thought that the way that the, the application worked, at least last year, didn't allow for organizations to explain exactly how long they'd been working in the community, and what they did exactly for the community. By the same token, I think asking people who apply to come in and sing for their supper might feel, might feel a little weird to the organizations that are asking for funds. Just my two cents there. And I appreciate that the council is considering this, and also understanding of that delicate balance between fixing a process and allocating more staff time than necessary to anything. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, so that does conclude our speakers. And I do have a motion on the table by Mayor Taylor, and a second by Vice Mayor Combs, to adopt a resolution approving the subcommittee's recommendation for the 2023-24 community funding allocations to local nonprofit agencies totaling $350,000. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting.
Councilmember Nash has a question.
Oh, please, sorry. I just wanted to make a statement that I am uncomfortable with the process the way it is. But I also think there's many very worthy organizations on the list that are expecting this funding. So I will be voting yes with great concern about the process and wanting to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further city council questions or discussion? Okay, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with City Councilmember Willison dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to our next agenda item, this item L, our public hearing. The public hearings are a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from interested parties on a proposed issue or action. The first public hearing is introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending the city's master fee schedule to include aquatics fees. Here to introduce this item is our Library and Community Services Director, Sean Reinhardt.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just one moment while we set up the presentation. Thank you for your patience while we set this up. Again, Sean Reinhardt, Library and Community Services Director. Joining me here is Tricia Mullin, our Library and Community Services Supervisor, and our staff liaison to the aquatics program. And also joining us is Tim Sheper, the CEO of Team Sheper Inc., who operates the aquatics program for the city. So again, this item is to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending the city's master fee schedule to include aquatics fees. The recommendation tonight is that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of that ordinance. That's in Attachment A, that would amend the city's master fee schedule to incorporate aquatics fees to become effective April 1st, should the ordinance be adopted. The master fee schedule currently has no fees for aquatics programs. Aquatics fees currently are set at the discretion of the aquatics operator Team Sheper. The recommendation to add aquatics fees to the master fee schedule is consistent with the requirements in the new aquatics operator agreement that the city council approved last September. Earlier this year, on January 9th, city council held a public hearing to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to include the aquatics fees. At that time, city council provided some great feedback to revise the proposed fees to reevaluate how best to prioritize access for residents, and to return with some additional data on the aquatics operation, which is presented in the staff report. The proposed, revised proposed ordinance and fees that are in Attachment A of tonight's report, they incorporate city council's direction from January 9th, in particular, not to reduce non-resident fees below the rates that are currently imposed. Just a little bit of process and timeline information. By statute, they recommended aquatics fees in the ordinance, and those are in Attachment A, Exhibit A. Those would take effect 30 days after the ordinance is adopted. A second reading and adoption of the ordinance is tentatively scheduled for two weeks from tonight, here at city council, February 27th. The aquatics operator is proposed to begin charging those fees, should they be adopted by city council, on April 1st. The recommended aquatics fees are equivalent, or will be equivalent, if they're adopted, at both aquatics centers, that's Burgess Pool and Bellhaven Pool. And they do include the new proposed hyperlocal resident rate. So about the hyperlocal resident rate, I know the city council has heard a little bit of this information before, so I'll be brief. The proposed aquatics fees include that rate. That was approved by city council on December 5th of 2023, and accompanying some other fees related to recreation programs. Those hyperlocal fees would provide Menlo Park residents who live within the Bellhaven Community Campus service area, a significant reduction in fees at the new Bellhaven Pool and other programs at that Bellhaven Community Campus. It's anticipated that this discount would result in overall lower revenues at Bellhaven Pool. Obviously, the, there's a pretty big discount there. But it's hoped that the increased usage of the facility that is hoped for there will offset the revenue loss to some degree. Some other considerations that are outlined in the staff report related to some of the questions that city council had on January 9th are about the resident use of the aquatics facilities, and in particular, prioritizing resident use. So just a reminder that the agreement between the city and Team Sheper, the aquatics operator, does include a resident use target. It sets a target that two-thirds or more of pool visitors at each of the two pool locations are, would be verified incorporated City of Menlo Park residents. So that's really already baked in to the agreement between the city and the aquatics operator that city council approved last September. City staff will be doing the independent verification of the addresses of the users of both pools, including Bellhaven Pool and Burgess Pool, using the city's geographic information systems database, sometimes called GIS. The aquatics operator shall provide to the city pretty frequent and robust reports about their visitors, broken down by residency. So we'll have all of that information. Another question that came up on January 9th was about kind of operating margins. And I have to offer the city council an apology. I believe I misspoke during that meeting and overstated the operating margins by an order of magnitude. It was a little late in the evening, added an extra zero there. So I apologize for that. However, as noted in staff report, the operating margins, this would be like the profit margin for the aquatics program, they're, they're quite slim. So in 2022, for example, they were less than 2%. In 2019, they were approximately 5%. Over the past few years, they fluctuated, you know, from a low of 2% to as high as 8 or 9%. Really, fairly tight margin, kind of like restaurant operator territory there. Another element that is included in the staff report here, in attached, in the attachment, I forget which attachment, I think it's Attachment E, if I'm not mistaken. Just want to make sure I referred that right. Yes, Attachment E, are some proposed future-year aquatics fee escalations. This is a schedule for potential escalations in future years. The city council could not take action on future escalations tonight. However, this is kind of setting out what the thinking is, in particular, related to phasing in increases to non-resident fees in particular. This would be to avoid sudden and sharp the increases, increases above what's currently being paid by those users, because that, that type of sharp fee increase could encounter some resistance from aquatic center Because that type of sharp fee increase could encounter some resistance from aquatic center users. It could adversely impact the overall usage, which could result in reduced revenues, which are needed to sustain the aquatics operation. So in those proposed future year fee escalations, the non-resident rates. Currently, they're around 10% higher than resident rate in what's proposed tonight. Next year, the proposal is that they would escalate to 20% greater than resident fees. And then in that third year, in 2026, escalating to 35% more than resident fees. And that's kind of consistent with that differential in some other areas of the city's fee schedule, like with recreation programs. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge that one thing that the city council did give staff some direction about in the coming year was to do a new cost of services study related to the city's fees. And that was last done in 2018. The results of that study may indicate or suggest, and the city council may direct staff to pursue some different other differential between resident and non-resident fees based on that data. I just wanted to call that out. So again, these future year proposed escalations really are subject to future action by the council and not tonight. Let's see, also in the attachments, Attachment F, there are comparisons to current and past aquatics fees that have been charged by Team Sheper, the aquatics operator. The vast majority of resident fees do not increase with the new proposed fees this evening. And in fact, there is a very substantial reduction proposed in resident fees specifically for residents who qualify for the hyperlocal rate. That's a reduction in 35% pretty much across the board. And if you look at the past year aquatics fees in Attachment F, many of those fees have not changed or increased in recent years. So thank you for your indulgence while I kind of just went through some of those key elements of the report. And we're happy to discuss those and respond to questions about them. But at this point, I think I would like to invite our aquatics operator, Tim Sheper, to speak a little bit about the programs that they're operating. Because I know that was another question that came up at the last meeting.
Thanks, Sean. All right, some of the programs that we offer are, of course, lap swim and open swim. And the youth programming that we offer is swim instruction, a bridge program, which is basically a pre-comp program, which is getting kids from the swim lesson program into and onto a swim team. We offer a summer swim team. And we offer four types of summer camps. And then our adult programming is a water exercise and an adult swim team. And we also offer lifeguard certification classes. Now, prior to the pandemic, we offered water therapy, women's water polo, and also a youth year-round swim team. But due to staffing losses and budgetary constraints, we now contract those three programs out to other parties. So comparisons to other pools, to other municipal pools. In my opinion, and through investigation, there's I don't think there's really a pool, a municipal pool that compares to what we have here in Menlo Park. And I believe there's a few reasons for that. One is just the location of this pool. So it's easily accessible from the north, the south, the east and the west, and there's ample parking. The other thing is the layout of the facility. So having two pools, it's so much more useful to serve the entire community. And it's not just the two pools, but it's the trees and the grass and just the space and the way it's associated with the park. I think that helps. But I also think one of the third thing that, you know, kind of sets our pool apart is that it's been our long and ongoing investment in developing the staff and the programming and our ability to retain the staff and just develop the programming over, and now nearly for two decades. And some people have been with us the entire time. And that's allowed us to just provide a high level of service to our community. And to define the high level of service that separates us from what other municipal pools have, I think are four things. One is our a year-round, high-functioning swim school. That is unmatched in a municipal setting. I also think it's that we offer year-round open swim program. The third is the amount of lap swimming that we have. So it's every single hour that the pool is open, there's lap swim available. So that amounts to 92 hours a week that community members could come in and swim. And the fourth thing is the way we put the puzzle together, the program scheduling. And it is it is built around the family and the family unit so that families can come to the pool and the youth can be served and the adults can also be in the water at the same time if they wish in the weekdays and also on the weekend.
Thank you, Tim, for that overview of the programs and what Team Sheper has brought to the city of Menlo Park and how that compares to some other municipal pools in the area. Very much appreciate you taking the time, and I'm sure some of the council members may have some questions for you on that after the presentation. We'll just move on. We're almost done here with the formal part of the presentation. Just want to note a couple of other things. That we do have a annual survey citywide asking Menlo Park residents about the aquatics program. That's in the field right now. If you haven't already taken it out there, it's at menlopark.gov/swim. At this point in time, I'm happy to report that there are well over 1,200 responses. We have a very robust data set. We do have a mailer going out into District 1 this week. So we're going to leave the survey open a little bit longer to make sure that we have more time to capture more feedback from the folks who live in the vicinity of the new pool that is going to be opening later this year. Also, all of that information from the survey, which again is conducted by the city, citywide, aquatics users and non-users. And along with the performance information from the past year that Team Sheper is putting together in the annual performance report that will be coming to the city council tentatively on March 26th. So tonight, really, the focus is on the aquatics fees. But just wanted to let the city council know that there will be an opportunity to really dive into the programming, the performance for the pool operator on March 26th. So I think we're rolling up to the end here. Some next steps, again, that recommendation is that the city council introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance. That's in Attachment A. Right now, we have tentatively scheduled the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for city council on February 27th. Obviously, that's subject to change if the city council so directs. If the ordinance in Attachment A is adopted by city council in two weeks on February 27th, then the aquatics operator Team Sheper would begin charging the new fees on April 1st. And that concludes the formal presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation and bringing it back to the dais. Are there any clarifying questions from the council before we go to public comment? Ms. Herron, can you take public comment at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So this time we'll be opening our public hearing, Item L1, Introduce and Waive the First Reading of an Ordinance Amending the City's Master Fee Schedule to Include Aquatic Fees. If you would like to speak on this item and you are in person and you haven't already, please complete a speaker card at that back table and return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. Okay, I currently have two cards. So this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing, Item L1. Okay, we'll be closing public comment, and our first speaker will be John Martin, followed by Tom McCray.
Mayor Taylor, city council members, thank you for allowing me to address you today. So here we are again. Some of you weren't here in October when I addressed the council last time. We talked about the swim program. Back in October, we had around 40 to 50 residents come and talk about a community program that we're all very attached to. I've been involved with for over 15 years. This is probably, I've lost count, fifth or sixth time I've come in front of the council to make an impassioned plea to maintain our community access. So the proposal put before the, I'm just going to do a little bit of history if I may. The proposal put before the council in October was accepted. And the assumption was that the operator would negotiate in good faith. We would include Solo in the program. And so why am I back here again? Well, we were concerned that the operator would not act in good faith. Staff, we had multiple meetings with staff, staff assured us they would. And at the last council meeting in January, I wasn't in attendance, but we presented evidence of other pools charging in the range of $6 to $8 per lane hour. We're a not-for-profit, we're currently paying $14 per lane hour. All the data was provided, it's all public. The pools are pretty good. I don't accept that the pools are not good or substandard. One of the things I understand the city council asked for was an identification in the fee schedule of the operator programs versus the non-operator programs. I can help you with that. If you look at the proposed fee schedule increases, you will see that the master swim program, which is an operator program, fees raised from $114 to $118. That's the proposal, that's 3.5%. For the nonoperator, for the community program, in that same time period, it's 30%. It goes from $14 to $18 and subsequently to 50%. So I don't see how this is fair. I don't see how this provides the community program that the council had agreed was unanimously, I felt, needed back in October. They want to charge the community program the same rates as these commercial programs. We just don't think that's fair or reasonable and respectful. We don't think that's what the council approved back in October. As a reminder, the city sees zero from these increases. The operator is not making a loss. I don't know what the denominator is, I don't know what that is 2% of, but they're making a profit today. So we don't think the operator should be increasing fees for any of the community programs. In fact, we think the operator should be bringing the fees back in line with what other local pools are charging. And we would therefore propose that you either reject outright the current proposal or you reduce the fees for the solo program and the passive program to something more aligned with $9 per lane hour versus the 18 and 21 that's being proposed. We feel this is a fair rate for a program that's been in existence for a long time, serves, seeks to serve the community, and it's the only, it's one of two nonprofit community programs in existence. Thank you, I realize the amount of time.
Thank you, John. Our final speaker will be Tom McCray.
I'm Tom McCray. Thank you, council so much. Thank you, Mr. Sheper, for operating the pool.
Tom?
Yes.
Can you move the mic up just a little bit? Thank you.
So thank you so much for having this again as an item on the agenda. One of the things that was discussed when this was brought up two council meetings ago was that the council gave direction that the information that was to come back was specifically supposed to address which programs were operated by the operator and which programs were operated by other people. And that's not in this information. The operator just gave you a great example of how the program is different at Burgess than other programs. However, he didn't tell you what the cost is, say, of a resident in Mountain View to go have their child on a swim team. So there was kind of like, hey, we're different in this way, but here's not a comparison between what somebody is paying over here compared to there. And in 2016 was the first time that the city went ahead and put forward $650,000 for operating costs. Solo's cost kept escalating for what our lane rate was. So it's nice that they went ahead and listed out, hey, we've been at this rate. This rate again is 75% more than what other programs, other community nonprofit youth swim programs in our area charge. And so it's just very important to be able to say, hey, you know what, are we comparing apples and oranges? Are we just saying, hey, Burgess Pool is really nice in this capacity? And therefore, this is what it needs to happen, right? Solo went ahead and put forward an RFP, and I'm not going to go down that path. What was discussed, though, is that the RFP by the operator was the best one, which then was is 1% return to the city off the $650,000. And two summers before that was brought before council because the pool operator went ahead and notified the city that he was terminating the agreement. And it was questioned by the council at that time. Members of the council said, how much is he actually making? And so I just say to you today, it's the same kind of thing. We're being asked to go ahead and increase our fees. Solo's happy to open up our books and show you, look, these are the margins. I myself hadn't had a pay raise for 10 years. And so it's just easy to look at it and say, what is a community program? And what is the overall outcome that's going in the operator's pocket? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Does conclude public comment for Item L1. Mayor Taylor, make it to.
Thank you. And bringing the conversation back to the dais, checking in with council to see if we have any questions for staff. Councilmember Dora.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the data shared here in this presentation. It's a lot clearer than last time, so thank you for all the work that's gone into that and to the staff. I have a question about Attachment E shows how non-resident rates will continue to increase. So by 2026 to 35% greater than resident rates over time. And I'm curious, with this increase in rates, both for resident, it goes up as well as non-resident, what that means, you know, for staff salaries at the pool? Are staff salaries going to be increasing at the same rate? Or will profit margins be increasing over time? What does the projections beyond just this coming year look like and mean for where revenue is going? Thank you.
Thank you, council member. That's a great question. I think I'll turn to Mr. Sheper to speak to the salary increases that they have on top of. Just in response to that, I'll just kind of reiterate that the proposed escalations in future years are just that, they're proposals. Certainly, the city council would revisit those each year. And I think with the benefit of the annual reports, the actual usage in particular of the new pool that will be opening later this year, certainly, all of that new data will be there to really kind of reassess what these escalations would actually be in practice. So but they are kind of proposed here to give an idea of what that shift from the current differential between resident and non-resident is currently to getting it to that kind of 35% differential, which is kind of our standard at this time for other fees. But then as far as kind of like escalating labor costs in particular, I think I'll turn to Tim to see if you had maybe some more information that you could offer.
I think that's right on, Sean, is that, you know, our company philosophy for the past 18 years has been trying to keep the the fees as low as we possibly can and stay static. And there's this great chart in the report that really demonstrates, you know, how we've really worked to do that. really demonstrates, you know, how we've really worked to do that. And so this introduction of this separation from what we charge into having this thirty-five percent differential between a resident and non-resident is a, is a, is a big step for us. And that's why we wanted to, um, have several years to do it so that we can keep the trust and keep the, um, uh, the user groups attached to, to the pool so that they don't, it doesn't really price them out of the market. So it's going to be, um, slow and progressive. As far as what those, um, funds are going to be used for, that's, that's down the road. So, but what we do is, uh, is annually, um, we have, uh, we, we increase our, um, our salaries to our, and our, 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 um, compensation to our staff anywhere from one till to five percent based on merit and then in, increased based on, you know, if they, if they, if they're changing positions as, as well.
At this time, just need to do one formality, and that is to close the public hearing. Um, and just wanted to check in with any other council member if they had any other questions for staff. Council member Nash.
Thank you. So is the idea that we will ask questions now and then have a discussion after?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. I do have questions on attachment F, please. And that is, um, it actually looks to me like there are not increases in this round of, in, in this round of fees, other than, um, there certainly are some, basically in the general resident, general non-resident, and both the senior resident, senior non-resident for lap, lap and open swim has no changes to those fees. So it did not go up ten percent for non-residents, it's staying the same. The same is true for, um, drop-in lap swim. And so the, the place where the fees really are changing is there is a general, for the masters, there is a general non-resident fee increase of ten percent. But the big increase is with the subcontractor lane rentals. And I'm wondering if you could explain that, please? And also given the fact that our user policy has a special clause that says nonprofits should be getting a lower rate and that this is actually increasing the rate. And perhaps we need two rates, one for nonprofits and one for other subcontractors. But I'm wondering if you could discuss that.
Uh, thank you, council member, for the excellent question. So in regard to the proposed fees overall, um, I, I apologize if I misspoke earlier. I believe the staff report is correct, but, um, what's proposed here, really in general, the non-resident rates are ten percent higher than the resident rates. That's kind of what I was referring to, not referring to non-resident rates increasing ten percent in this round. They're, they currently are in a state where, for the most part, they're ten percent higher right now. And that's what's proposed.
And they are not increasing this?
Not increasing, except in a couple of examples, which I think you, you pointed out. So I just wanted to clarify that. And again, I apologize if I wasn't clear in the presentation portion. And then in regard to the subcontractor lane rental, there is, um, just get the, um, numbers here on the screen. That's probably the best way so folks can kind of see what we're referring to. So, um, this is, uh, I know this chart's a little bit small, but I've got it blown up as much as possible. But, um, I think as mentioned in some past discussions, the per lane per hour rates for subcontractors, in particular for, for the ones that contractor has been the same since twenty eighteen. Um, I just do want to clarify that the staff report does very clearly spell out who operates which programs, that the aquatics programs are, are all operated by the aquatics operator with the exception of those subcontractor lane rentals. And that's really what we're talking about here with this chart. So those are, you know, so outside, just basically renting space in the pool. We did do a, a look at some of the other pools in the area and what their lane rental rates are for subcontractors. You know, it does vary somewhat, every pool is a little bit different, every community is a little bit different. But, um, and also there are different rates sometimes charged by some municipalities for groups that seem to have some kind of legacy attachment to, um, the, uh, to the city. But, um, Ms. Mullin, I think, did a little bit of research on that, and so maybe she can kind of summarize that.
Thank you, Sean. So in reference to the city of Morgan Hill, currently they are charging a lane rate fee of, um, ten dollars for residents and seventeen dollars for non-residents. I don't know how they designate that. And they're proposing for this upcoming master fee schedule, an increase of twelve dollars for resident and seventeen dollars for non-resident. For, um, Mountain View, uh, Eagle Park, uh, for lanes, it is six dollars an hour. For Rangstorf, it is seven dollars an hour. And I don't know if they're going to be increasing that for the new center. They did not give me those numbers. And then the last number I do have on here is Palo Alto, and it is twenty dollars an hour for the same lanes. Um, I did reference, um, the city of Pacifica, just because it was referenced in the last meeting. They do not currently have a lane rate fee, it's a hundred dollar, a hundred and eighty dollars for the entire pool, but they are going to be recommending, um, a twenty dollar lane rate, um, coming up.
Thank you. So what was the logic behind the big increase in this subcontractor, just focusing on that right now, and then I'll go back to, um, resident, non-resident? What was the logic behind the increase in subcontractor lane fees? Given, especially given that I believe both of the contractors are nonprofits, as is Menlo Mavens.
Yeah. Okay, so the, um, the subcontractor rates have been, um, steady at, at fourteen because that was in the, uh, agreement with, with solo was written into the, um, city contract. While all the other, the fees for lap swim have increased over that period of time and the, um, staff compensation has also increased. Everything has increased while the, um, lane rates for these contractors have remained the same for the past five to six years.
So could you explain the rationale between not raising the regular, the resident, non-resident rates and raising? Well, let's forget at this point, the subcontractor, let's, um, what is the rationale for not increasing the non-resident rates this year?
If I, if I could, and Tim, jump in, I think some of that is a question of like the volume that we're talking about. When you're talking about the overall usage of the pool for lap swim and some of the other programs, it's just a, a lot more lane hours in the pool. And so, um, changes, um, in those rates could have that impact on pool usage, which would have that more substantial impact on the operating revenue, which is really needed for the pool. Whereas the, the per lane per hour rental is, is a smaller proportion. So, um, Tim, uh, feel free to jump in if I'm not capturing that correctly, but I think it really does kind of boil down to a matter of scale.
It also boils down to the fact that our resident and non-resident rates have, um, for the past eighteen years, just been for laps with an open swim. And people are used to that, and the users are used to that. And now it's going across all the, um, all the programs that we have. So for swims, swim instruction, for, um, for masters, for, uh, water exercise. So those people are, are seeing, um, a ten percent increase across their fees. Things that they haven't had before, so residents and non-residents have, have paid the same price. And now they're, they're getting that big increase. And so we've kept lap and open swim the same. My intent is to have the least disruption to this community as possible in these, in these big programs, these massive programs like, uh, lap and open swim. And then slowly and progressively and incrementally over time, change it so that we can, um, stay solvent in business.
Thank you. Council member Dora?
Thank you, a question building off of this. I, I'm going to ask for a back of the envelope, um, just to, to test out an idea that came up here. So say, what if for the nonprofit subcontractors, Passa and Solo, the rate was set to fifteen dollars? How much, or all the, if there's another nonprofit, and Mavens, if they're nonprofit, um, if all those were set to say fifteen dollars, uh, what amount of offset or lost opportunity fee would there be that would need to be covered by other fees? And would that for say, for example, be covered by raising the general non-resident rate for open swim and lap swim from ten dollars, which is where it currently is and is proposed in this, uh, fee structure to eleven dollars? Would that cover the cost differential of reducing the nonprofit subcontractor rates to fifteen for the next year? Let me know if that makes sense. I'm trying to understand, what are the, what are the options we have here to weigh a gentler increase for nonprofit subcontractors?
So council member, just to reiterate, make sure, understanding, like, the question, um, idea correctly would be to look at the nonprofit subcontractor, uh, lane renters that are currently listed here, currently in operation. And to, you're proposing, I think, to phase in escalations to that lane rate at a slower pace. So for example, what currently it's fourteen, um, raise it only to say fifteen with this go around and thereby kind of increasing it at, at a slower rate. Is that, is that correct? And then the question is, I think, to the operator, I don't know if they're in a position to do that kind of math tonight, but would that work? Would there be any impacts for that, knowing it's a smaller portion of the overall operation?
Yeah, we would definitely like time to, um, to sit down and review that and, and see what that would be. Yeah, in this, in the setting, back of the envelope sounds good, but it just, you know, we need actual time to sit down and go back in the envelope. And I don't know if this forum is, is the right place to do it, but, you know, I'd love to.
Thank you. Yeah, and, um, I'll turn it over to the others in the dais. Council member Nash?
How many lap hours, um, approximately do non, do the nonprofits, do the subcontractors rent out the pool?
Well, they're, um, they start at four P M. in the afternoon and they go up until seven thirty or eight P M. at night, um, across to eight lanes. Five days a week. So I don't. Is that, is that helpful? I mean, what you're looking for? Yeah.
That's helpful. And then do the Menlo Mavens who take the whole pool, do they pay by the lane or do they pay by the pool?
It's, it's, they, they take eight lanes, just, just like the other. So we, um, we, we do abide by keeping the lap swim open and available at all times and, uh, three lanes. So, uh, they're paying, um, a rate right now that is, that is higher than, um, what Solo and Passa are paying. And so
Understood.
And the water fitness is also paying, um, a higher rate.
How much is water fitness paying?
They're paying eighteen. They are, um, they're in a different pool. So it's, there's less pool. There's, there's more impaction of that pool. So there's, there's higher demand to get into that pool.
Council member Nash, did you have a follow-up question?
I just was wondering, I saw Mr. Martin, um, looking to make a comment, and I was wondering if that was appropriate or not.
On, on this, on this discussion here? You can come up to the dais. Thank you. I'm sorry, come up to the podium.
Sorry, my understanding is the Aqua Fit is for profit, but it's not one of the not-for-profits. So there's two not-for-profit, Passa and Solo. I just want to make sure that's clear because I would suggest those are treated differently. Thank you.
And I've looked at Menlo Mavens is also a nonprofit on their website.
Passa is a, a nonprofit, and they have agreed to the eighteen dollar fee.
Thank you. I, I have a, a question, and this is just about the fee for spectators, both resident and non-resident. And it's my understanding this is a standard fee that the city has charged or the provider has charged? And then the definition of a spectator, is it someone bringing their child and they pay too?
Yeah, this is, is a really good question. And it's, it's something that, um, we've just introduced, um, more recently. And it's, it's, we only put it into effect during the summertime, during the open swim, uh, periods. And the reason we've put it into play is because, um, it's rarely difficult to manage who's coming into the facility and who's actually using, using it and who isn't. And there's been, um, how to say it gently, but there's been, there's been widespread abuse of, um, coming into the pool and saying they're going to be, uh, not using it and using it. So, um, for, I think it's been two years now that we've had a spectator fee. And again, it's just for, at a period of time where there's a high volume and a usage and, um, and, uh, we, we're unable to control is actually who is coming in to use it and who is just going to come in and sit and watch.
Thank you. And so will summers only be added because it doesn't say that in the staff report? Summers only for the spectator fee, unless it's going to be a year-round fee now?
Well, um, if, if that is a direction from city council, of course, any change of that nature could be made. I think from like kind of a implementation standpoint, the way that the fee schedule is structured is that to make sure that the fees are there, they don't necessarily need to be charged at all times depending on the individual program. Um, and that's the case in some other areas of the fee schedule, but we could, we could take that as direction that the expectation is like, this is a summer, a, a summer fee. To put it in the fee schedule then would, um, I think be inconsistent with some other fees that don't quite have that level of specificity, um, but we certainly could take that as direction.
Council member Nash? I was actually curious about the spectator fees as well. So someone who's, um, brings their child to swim lessons is not considered a spectator? It's really, um, or actually, could you explain it a little bit further?
No, you're right. So if somebody's bringing their child, they're, they're not a spectator. It's, it's the, um, families coming in or big groups coming in. And sometimes they come in in groups of, you know, five to twelve. And, um, they're saying, well, the, this number of people are swimming and this number isn't swimming. They're coming just to have a picnic and, and sit down. Then later we find out they're, they're actually using the pool and in the water. And they, they just, they haven't paid, so. we do have family fees. And I think we are one of the few facilities that have family fees. And so that's up to five members of a family for $24. But that that is still just being optimized by the the community and to to their favor.
To be honestly, I think it would be appropriate to charge anyone who's going to the facility in that situation a swim fee. I think it would be incredibly difficult to tell whether someone was swimming or not. And regardless whether they're swimming, they're still, especially if it's a crowded pool, that's activity that is something the lifeguard is aware of. And I would have no problem if you did not charge spectator fees and instead actually just anyone who's coming into the facility is considered a swimmer, whether they're actually going in the water or not, or just sunbathing, they're still using the facility and your services.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so I'll start off with saying that like I I have some level of comfort, discomfort diving into the the finances of of a of a business, a private business. Because I feel that like I don't have all the the context. But then you've based your business off the use of a public facility. So so here we are. And my question is, is given that like if we go back to this this issue of this subcontractor lien rental fee and specifically the increases. And appreciate councilmember Doors about sort of like a back of the envelope, like if it's just $15 and you not being able to like sort of actually get on the spot like some specificity as far as that impact. But if you're not in deficit now, like right at $14, then like, how is it that you would be? It would be a negative impact to to hold that, like, right? In theory, anything or like if we're just going at $1, it would all be like sort of net new. Unless there are expenses some other place that are coming into play that that you feel then needs to be covered. And that's why you you're you feel that this is why you need to increase the revenue generated here. Again, and I don't know the specifics, I could be way off. But 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 that's what I think I am trying to understand because that is a concern that again, for one set of users, and I appreciate that like there may be greater sensitivity with individual users of the pool than entities that that contract out. But but in theory, they are they are usages at different levels of the pool. And in one set of users, you've decided to hold essentially for this cycle and another set of users, which I appreciate are different, you've decided to sort of increase. And so it would be great if I if you could, again, like walk me through that just just a little bit. In like, again, why wouldn't a more modest increase be be appropriate?
Thank you. First off, it was not our decision to hold at at that $14 lane rate. That was a decision made by the city council at 14.
But I mean, and with all due respect, but of which you contracted to, of which you accepted, right? And so so like, let's it's not you 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 have freedom to contract with the city or not contract with the city. Like, right? So but okay, I'll let you continue. I won't interrupt you. I apologize.
Okay. So in January, we review all of our staff members and we're we're deep in on all of our reviews of now of 150 staff members. And all these staff members, well, most of them get pay increases from anywhere from zero to 5%. So those pay increases go into effect in February. We into into the February and early March payroll. So these are our our costs for our labor is going to go up real soon. Also, we're in the midst of hiring full-time year-round staff for Menlo or Bellhaven. And we are not going to be receiving any revenue for for many months, but we are going to be paying full-time staff. We're not going to be receiving revenue from Bellhaven for several months. And but we'll be paying full-time staff for for Bellhaven as they're doing the recruiting, the hiring, the planning, et cetera.
So so that's where you need to cover, you think. So so increase salaries, again, appreciate that. So then why not? I mean, and I don't know the extent to which you're taking the lead here and our staff is seeing the lead as far as, but why not have a broader and more holistic approach as it relates to increasing fees, like, right? I I get to a point that like individual users may be more sensitive. But at some point, when you have such a vastly different sort of change or increase for, you know, different set of users, I think it brings up the issue of it seems unfair, right? And so again, like if you were purely a private company, it was your own pool, then you have the right to do that, right? You can say, I think that this population is more price sensitive, so I'm going to hold the line on them. And this other population, I think, you know, can can withstand it. And so I'm gonna like, you know, get my profit margins off them. Completely appropriate. But you have to understand that for us, when we're talking about at the core public facility, that there is going to be a concern for an approach like that, especially as it relates to in this this case, three nonprofit organizations.
If I could through the mayor, first of all, I do want to appreciate the comments on this topic. I think they've been quite instructive and insightful. You know, what I've been hearing is that the operator was looking at rates that had not changed in quite some time as potential opportunity areas for first of all, kind of parity among some of the other subcontractor renters. But also because they do have those increased costs and those hadn't been adjusted in a while. But I think this feedback is is quite helpful and instructive. So I actually have kind of a process related question, and it even goes back to the the suggestion to maybe change change this particular fee. Right now, it's it's in this first reading of the ordinance at $18. So if that were to change from the city council's direction and after kind of looking at the numbers and everything, I guess my question is to on the city attorney possibly about process wise, could that even be done from the dais tonight? Or would there need to be another reading of the ordinance?
We want to come back with amendments at a separate at another hearing.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful.
Would that be a new first reading or could that be done with the second reading?
You're right, we can do that with the second reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dorr?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would be interested in seeing that amendment. So say, with $15 across the board for the nonprofit contractors, maintaining the rate that you already have set with the for-profit subcontractors. That would be a 7% increase from 14 to 15. I think that would be interesting to see. And then seeing from there, what other adjustments do you think would need to be made to still make sure as you're building up a new staff at the Bellhaven pool? That is something that would be of interest for me. And I'm I'm curious if there's yeah, what other folks in the dais think about? Are there other scenarios? Should we see a $15 per lane per hour? Should we also see a $16 per lane per hour, which would be a 14% increase? Yeah, curious.
I mean, I'm going to say like, yes, like, right, I'd be open to that. But then it I am, Councilmember Wilson's earlier comments about the community grant funding come to mind like like, again, like what expertise, like here's a businessman who's looking at these numbers all day. And then I'm saying like, oh, okay, like, let's do 15, let's do 16. I don't know from what place of knowledge I'm making that. But I'm willing to go along with you, like, right? Because I do think that there's legitimate concerns from established community nonprofits about about these increases and the impacts and the disparate nature that 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 is appearing there. I think that that's valid. And so to some extent, I'm willing to go on your this journey. But again, like I say, I do it somewhat cautiously. It seems like councilmember.
Thank you. Interesting discussion. I appreciate all your comments. So at the last meeting, I think to Mr. Reinhardt's kind apology, I was very jarred when I heard that the profit margin was like $400,000, which represented, I don't know what percentage. But given the correction that represents 2%, I think it was like $40,000 in the fluctuations over time. To me, that sounds like a reasonable margin to be playing in. So then the question becomes if that's what we're comfortable and which I do still think is a little strange is not in the contract, what the acceptable margin of profitability is. But that being said. But if if what the recent history of the profit margin fluctuating up and down, we we agree is like a reasonable amount. Then it becomes kind of like to councilmember Doors back of the envelope, hypothetical, like an exercise in winners and losers. Like we're turning one dial and then we have to make up for the for another program. And to councilmember or Vice Mayor Combs's point, like, how do we know how to turn those dials? And right now, the decision making that we are doing is based on a very vocal and beloved community organization. But we have PASA, who I don't believe we've heard from, and Menlo mavens, who's a nonprofit. Have they, Mr. Sheperd, both agreed to the $18 change?
Yes.
So I'm just wondering if we have some if if to be honest, I'm very uncomfortable about this weird dynamic we have in council chambers that seems to repeat over and over again between our operator and our one subcontractor and the council and staff. We are spending a crazy amount of time litigating, relitigating, kind of like trying to moderate some of these conflicts. And I think that that, yes, they're a nonprofit, but if we treat all of our nonprofits the same, or we're treating all of our subcontractors the same, at the end of the day, it's a pool that has a limited number of lanes and resources. And we've agreed that we've picked this operator for their expertise and we've agreed that they're entitled to X amount of money, a margin. And we're not hearing from any other group complaining about fees, really. It's this whole cycle is is I don't know how we get out of it, but part of me just wants to say go with the staff. We have a staff that's vetted these recommendations, that's looked at the historical price increase, that's looking at the regional trends on what pools are charging. And I'm concerned that we are over and this is no offense to you. I think everyone should advocate for their own interests, but that we're oversampling a very one one set of voices. So I'm just throwing out that that concept for the council to consider.
I appreciate that, Councilmember Wilson. And each time that the discussion of aquatics comes to the council, this is it. And and part of it is it wasn't a unanimous decision. And there are still concerns that are brought by providers and then also by community members concerned that they'll be priced out of a public facility. And so that's why I think we keep going back and forth because personally, I would like to do right by a residence first. And so what does that look like? And it's it's a it's hard to do that because you're looking at a provider and the fact that you do need to make a revenue in order to survive. And so that's the the challenge that we have. And I'm sure that we can actually solve it together. What I'm concerned about is that we're looking up at scaling up so much, ramping up so much, that we won't be able to meet it. And so I'm not sure, Mr. Sheperd, if you and your team have looked at programming that was was primarily community focused as opposed to providing, say, 100% of services you were looking at, especially with the new community center, looking at something that was at a smaller scale so that you can meet that need and then ramp up. And I'm not sure if that's already what you're planning on doing. But it sounds like you're going full throttle with the new community center. So just just want to hear your thoughts on that.
If I could do the mayor, just to jump in, just to kind of remind, because the this conversation is sort of doing some callbacks, I think, to the discussion about the operator contract authorization that occurred back in September. I just want to reiterate some key points in the agreement, which is that one of the directions that's actually baked into the agreement is that the programs and hours of operation shall be equivalent or comparable between Burgess Pool and the Bellhaven Pool. So I think that's the the place that the operator has been making their preparations that if the Burgess Pool is open seven days per week, year round, a certain number of hours per day, that the Bellhaven Pool also shall be open those same number of hours, so same number of days, and that the programs, you know, shall be comparable as well. So I think that's kind of that's already kind of baked into the agreement. So if there's some discussion about something different.
Excuse me for a moment. And the reason I bring this up is because of the back and forth on the dais. Because there are some issues that haven't been resolved, even though there is a contract, there are still some issues. And so we are doing our best here to actually resolve those. And a part of that may be asking questions that may be in a contract. But here we can have a discussion about it as opposed to going to a document and reading it. So I think it's helpful to do that. Again, I'm just bringing a concern that if we're ramping things up with programming and it's too much, that maybe we won't meet that bar. And maybe a part of what is being charged is related to that, but I don't know, which is why we're having a discussion here.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate the opportunity to just share a couple of things about the agreement. I hope they were helpful, but a point well taken. Thank you.
Councilmember Nash and then Vice Mayor Combs?
So just I have several comments to make, but right now I'm just going to address the one about the Bellhaven Community Campus, the Bellhaven Pool. And that is especially because Mayor Taylor and I have been working on the subcommittee and other council members have not had the opportunity to hear some of our thoughts on this, which I think are relevant right now. And that is that we have asked for to meet with staff to discuss the upper the programming at the Bellhaven Community Pool because we are concerned about what exactly will be brought forward. And we want to try and do that in the most helpful way early as possible. So once again, we are asking that we get some time with staff to talk about the Bellhaven Community Pool before things are baked, so that we don't have another mismatch and go through meeting after meeting after meeting with this. And basically, to councilmembers, what we are thinking of is that we probably that it makes sense to start smaller, not have as much programming in there at the beginning and to have allowed the community to enjoy the pool with open swim, with lap swim, and really encourage as much of the community and citywide residents as possible to enjoy the pool and not have it too many times when it won't be available because it'll be already programmed with other teams using it, with other classes using it. Now, there is still some classes that will definitely be desired, which we can discuss. But we definitely want to have that conversation early before we're too far down the road. Anything else to add to that, Mayor Taylor? Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Oh, thank you. No, I was just going to say I will leave my other comments till after Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, so I'll just respond. I totally hear you and respect where you're coming from on that point. Then for me, it becomes a concern of of like, should we have not contracted with the pool and just sort of kept it? If now we're going to go down the road of very specifically sort of dictating like how it's going to roll out. And again, that that that's a concern. But I I hear you exactly where you're coming from. But what I was going to do is respond to Councilmember Wilson, because I hear you two very clearly. And I think And I think at some point, certainly we, making sure that everyone has had their piece on this, I think it may be needed just for someone to make a motion and for us to see where we are. And so take that as a very public prompt. That, that again, I think is important to, that everyone get heard out. But, but at some point, I, I think it, it may be just important for, for, for there to be emotion and for us to see where we're at. And, and, and if we are really at an impasse, then, then we have to go back and really, really dig. But we may not be at an impasse. And, and I think that, that, that's important, that, that we understand that sooner rather than later.
Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. I am hoping that's a good introduction to what I was, I wanted to say. Basically, for purposes of tonight's meeting, we are focused on the master fee schedule. And I'm looking forward to a discussion on the pool operations when we look at the annual report. So this is really about the master fee schedule. And there are really two policy matters, I think, around, that are core to the council direction about the aquatics fees. And they both relate to the fact that the residents of Menlo Park have financed the construction at our Burgess and Bell Haven Pool facilities and continue to pay substantial costs of annual maintenance. So one policy matter has been resolved in the new aquatics operator agreement, and that was setting a target of the two-thirds residents. And I'm really looking forward to getting the reports on that. I understand from the, that we will be getting those semi-annually. Tonight, I believe we should resolve the second issue by agreeing that resident fees for pool use should be substantially less than fees charged to non-resident users. And our standard practice for the recreation facilities has been that non-resident users pay 35% more than residents. And I think we should follow that practice for pool users. And I think beyond that, we should have, well, we also have a practice of nonprofits having lower fees than for-profits. And so I think we should use that for the subcontractor pool lanes. But I would like to see us move more quickly and have 35% differential. I guess what I would propose tonight, because we are in this round, just this circular discussion about these fees, would be that we actually proceed with the proposed fees so that we don't have to go through another noticing and all. I would like to see the nonprofit fees for lanes actually remain the same. And the for-profit fees can be increased as appropriate. I would like to see us proceed with the fees as are charged right now. They really are not increasing for residents or non-residents generally. And I would like to see staff come back to the council as soon as possible with a, with a way to have that 35% differential. I think between the budget, the housing element, what we have to do, the budget elections and all, that probably won't be till late in the year, maybe December. But I would like as soon as possible to see us come back with having a way to have a 35% differential. Thank you. And I actually will make a motion to that effect.
I am confused of what the motion is.
So the motion is to approve the, the fees as they are in, as they've been publicly noticed. So as they are in the staff report, except for nonprofit subcontractor lane fees. But other than that, the fees would be as they are. Most fees are not changing. So what you've seen in the staff report, what has been publicly noticed, would proceed. And then staff would come back in December or earlier if possible with a proposal how we get to the 35% fees. And very honestly, I think I will go out and say that may be in a two-year process. I do not want to see it in a three-year process.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So going back to this, like, like fixed amount of profit margin. So we're turning down, potentially turning down the nonprofit fee, but we're not compensating for that decrease in an increase elsewhere at this time?
I am fine if staff wants to come back, or the organization wants to come back through staff with a new revision of fees. I was trying not to have us go in another circle with more, with another public hearing. Noticing a public hearing, I talked to staff and that was a concern, that we don't continue this loop. But I would be absolutely fine if there in fact was an increase in the non-resident fees at this time. Very honestly, right now, non-resident fees for lap, and I believe open swimming is $90, and the resident fees is $10. To increase it to 35% would mean that differential. If you keep the resident fees at $9, would mean that the non-resident fees go to $12, which is half a cup of coffee. It is, even though 35% sounds like a big difference. And it's not nothing. It is not, it, there is a possibility to move in that direction. And I also do not want to specify, I would personally like to see resident fees reduced. One of, we had a, there has been a question on the survey that was sent out. And on the survey, if I have it here, well, basically the third and fourth answer, the first two answers were essentially that they, people wanted to see the pool stay open, that they wanted to see it open many hours. The second, the third and fourth answer, actually, I'll try and sign this, so I'm getting the exact words. Here it is. So question number nine, for aquatics and swimming programs, how important are the following items? The first most important answer by, in this survey, was swimming pools are open year-round. The second most important answer, most popular answer, was swimming pools are open seven days a week. Then it said swimming pools are focused on needs of Menlo Park residents. Then it said swimming pools have free or discounted fees for Menlo Park residents. One of the things I would like to see answering that survey is actually to have reduced fees for Menlo Park residents. But I don't, as has been stated up here, we don't know the economics of the pool. All we know is that we have a policy that's a standard practice for our library community services department for recreation facilities. There's generally a 30, there is a practice of a 35% difference between residents and non-residents. So how we get there, whether it's resident fees only go up a little bit and non-resident fees go down a little bit, that would be great. But I think that that's something that we leave to the provider to determine.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. I appreciate this, putting something out on the table. And I'm mostly in agreement, but there are two slight adjustments to these different dials. I think that's a helpful analogy of thinking about the back of the envelope needs here. So what I would feel more comfortable with is a slight increase in the nonprofit subcontractor rates to between 7% to 14%, which would be a dollar or two more per lane. And then, as needed, a 10% to 15% increase for non-resident rate fees on to, as much as, on as many things as is needed to fill the gap that reducing on the nonprofit subcontractor rates would need. And so instead of, so addressing the, yes. So 7% to 14% increase in nonprofit subcontractor rates as opposed to the 29% that's proposed here. And then depending on whatever gap that creates for the operator, that that could be filled by ramping up non-resident fees by 10% to 15% as they deem as needed. Or, or less if, if needed, but just filling the gap with non-resident fees.
Shall I respond? I guess a couple of things. One is I think that the nonprofits are already paying a significant amount. And I actually just looked online at the financial statements of the nonprofits, and they are running pretty darn tight. So I am concerned, on one hand, I understand it's not my job to necessarily keep nonprofits in business. On the other hand, they, they are really running a tight margin. So I am concerned about raising rates on nonprofits when, I think ultimately, well, I guess one of the pieces, and this may be a question to Mr. Sheperd, is when a nonprofit is using the pool, they, what is the rationale of the additional costs that a nonprofit is? What are the additional costs of the nonprofit using the pool? I certainly understand, as you have more swimmers in the pool, you have, in open swim or lap swim, you have more responsibilities. But the nonprofits, I think, supervise their own groups? And, or do they still require lifeguards and all? I guess, and this may be getting too much into the weeds and not seeing at the policy level, so I guess I will withdraw that question. But I just, I, I do question what the real need is there, as opposed to, it strikes me as interesting that there was not a desire to increase the non-resident fees, which actually I believe would, would generate quite a bit more money because you have many more people going through than you do hours of the nonprofits. But again, that's sort of getting into the weeds. The one last thing I'd like to say is, maybe not last, but one more thing I'd like to say is just, I don't know that we really know what the operating margins are. All of this is, these are not our books, these are not our numbers, we don't see the details. So while I'm not, you know, I, I, we get the numbers of, while there's a 2% operating profit or a margin, we don't really know what those numbers are. So it's hard to make any judgments based on that. We certainly want the organization to do well and to, you know, appreciate what they're doing in Menlo Park and don't want to have a big squeeze. But I, when I hear that, you know, we want to maintain the profit margin, we don't really know what they are.
I hear you. And one quick response, that the reason why I'm trying to propose something that's trying to be a middle ground between what Councilmember Wilson said about trying to follow what staff have provided here and the recommendation of some kind of increase for nonprofit rates and some kind of not too great of an increase for other fees. I'm wondering, is there a, a ground, someplace between the position that you're sharing and this other idea of, of going with what staff is sharing?
And one of the things that I was trying to do was to stay within what we have had as a public hearing, so that we don't have to bring this back other than for a second reading, which I believe we were told that we could make an adjustment to the nonprofit. I've, I am willing to, you know, consider other options. I'd love to hear what other people say. But the reason why we weren't trying to, why I was not advocating for making these changes now and coming back was because staff has other things to do. And I think it may take longer to, we're trying to hit an April 1 timeline to get these rates posted, I think.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I, I do think it's worth pointing out that, which has been pointed out before, that like, as, there's in theory only one nonprofit that seems to be having concerns with the, the $18. If we, and again, I can only take, the Sheperd organizations were, that like, the other nonprofits seem to be on board with, with, I mean, which could be the case, I don't know. They, they aren't here. And so I, I do have to take that. And, and like I said, I, I, if, if that's where the council is going, of, of trying to do like a sort of split the baby situation, I could be there. But I, I don't know, like, right? I don't know what 16, I don't even know if there's really a gap to be filled, like, right? And I know that this is how they've decided that they want to run this business. And, and so I, I don't know if, again, like I say, I have the knowledge to get into the details. And to, I, I think you make a very valid point about profit margins. Again, also, I have no doubt that the leaders of these organizations pay themselves a salary. And so, anyone in a small business knows that, that, that sort of what you take as profit or what you take as, as a salary can, you know, can be very interesting. And so like, yeah, but again, another indication of, I don't really know and don't, don't have, I, I think the knowledge. And, and so I do sort of, I think, fall back more and more to where what Councilmember Wilson has expressed is that, that we do have a staff recommendation here. And, and I don't know if I have the knowledge to, to make these tweaks. And, and so I don't know if that's where I'm at. If ultimately, there are others on the council that feel that they do have some comfort in making those tweaks, then like I say, I might be there with you. But I, it's not, certainly not a discussion I can lead.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you. I appreciate this discussion. I appreciate your passion for the pool and for our residents and for getting this right. This is year one of a fee thing. And so there's going to be some more bites at the apple to adjust the non-resident fees. At this point, I, I can't, I don't think I'll be supporting a motion that veers from the staff recommendation at this time. It feels like, like zoning from the dais or something. Like, I just, I feel like we're adjusting things. And I feel like part of the reason that we picked a pool operator and didn't keep it in-house was to like, avoid the headache, like, we are not experts in running a pool. And I feel like having these discussions over and over and like, continuing to pick at it is like a huge resource, we're using tons of council time on this. And I just feel like we got to like, let them run the pool. And if we start hearing, you know, from more people about the injustice of this, you know, we're going to hear, and like I said, we're going to have another bite at this in a year. And so I just, I, that's where I'm at. But again, if the council's going for a different option, then go for it.
Thank you. I am, I, I'm in support of Betsy's recommendation. I think to have a 35% difference between what a resident versus non-resident pays shows that the council is willing to set rates that prioritize residents' requests in a survey. I mean, our community asked for it. And as far as, I'm not sure if all the nonprofits that provide services through Sheperd's contract were informed about the meeting this evening. Don't know why all three aren't here. But it would be nice to hear from them. They're not here, so we have to make assumptions on our own about that. But I'm definitely in support of having a difference between, a solid difference between resident versus non-resident fees for our publicly paid facility. So that's where I'm at on this one.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I see us getting there over time. I just see the, that a lot of thought went into this. And so I see it more as a, a over time thing than a tonight thing. But I respect where you guys are at with this.
Thank you. And I, I believe at our, at the last meeting, that Vice Mayor Combs was not in attendance for, that was some of the direction that Councilmember Nash and I did provide. So this isn't new information. And on that note, does somebody want to make a motion?
I believe that Councilmember Nash had made a motion.
That's right.
And then Councilmember Doors trying to make some friendly amendments. I don't know where they were at.
So I would be willing to do the $1 increase for the, not happily, I'd be willing to, in the interest of compromise, do the $1 increase for the nonprofits. I would like to, as I said, approve staff's recommendation, except for that, for tonight, but request that there's more discussion and that this comes back earlier than a year with some changes that move us to. with some changes that move us to the 35% more quickly than is proposed in the staff report. I'd like to point out that in September, what we originally unanimously approved actually included a 35% differential. And then that was clawed back, saying that that was a draft that was not there. But that, that was the original, um, I don't know if, actually, let's not even go there. But I would say, I don't think that this is that, this is a standard practice for our city, for our department. And so that's why I'm saying it's, you know, this is a policy decision. It's up to staff and Team Sheper to actually figure out how to have it implemented, come back to us and let us know how they are planning to implement that once we make the policy decision that 35% differential is appropriate.
I would just add, like, currently, um, the nonprofits pay different rates. And so Mavens, if, if this is accurate, right, currently pays $16. And so when we talk about moving, and, and then, uh, Pasa and Solo play $14. And so if we're saying only increase by a dollar, are we saying that that would increase, you know, Solo in positive 15 and then Mavens to 17? Or would we then be saying that that should bring Mavens down actually a dollar to have some equity between the nonprofits? So I just think that, that's something you guys have to work out. Again, like I said, I'm not leading this discussion.
Going back to that there is a motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
But my only thing is, I think that point has to be clarified because the motion did say to increase the nonprofit by a dollar. And, and, um, and I, I think that that has to be clarified in the motion.
Well, I'm sorry, through the mayor. I, I need clarity on what this increased dollar is also because we, we are not increasing any rates tonight. If the direction is to come back with an increased rate or a new rate, that's fine. But, but to increase rates, we do have to have a new first hearing and notice that increased rate.
Well, this is actually, if you don't mind, um, this is actually a decrease from what was noticed because what was noticed was $18 and we are suggesting making it
Got it.
15, I believe. And I am looking to anyone else about the, um, I mean, I'm, well, go for it.
Okay. So can I try to restate the motion for the, for the record? Oh yeah, you go, Judy.
Yeah. I can definitely try. All right. So, um, the motion would be introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending the city's master fee schedule to incorporate proposed changes in fees to become effective April 1st after the ordinance is adopted to include aquatic fees and include a $1 increase to $15 for the nonprofit subcontractor lane rental fees.
I think the clarification that Vice Mayor Combs mentioned is that one is already at 16 and so.
So, um, through the mayor, if I may, um, so my interpretation of that would be what was just shown on the screen and I will share it again, uh, in the proposed ordinance this evening is for the subcontractor lane rental per hour per lane to be $18. So if, um, what the direction, which is heard in this motion that the city clerk reiterated was for that number to be 15. So the way the master fee schedule works is you, you cannot charge more than is listed in the fee schedule. So the, the one agency that is paying 16, this would effectively change their rate to 15.
Councilmember Nash, just a moment. We need, the council needs a bio break, all of us. So if we can take five, please, or seven, thank you.
Okay, having our city council back at our in-person deis. Mayor Taylor, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Erin, and thank you all for your patience. And at this time, I would like to turn it back to our staff. Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think, picking up where we left off, I think I'd heard a motion on the floor that the city clerk had reiterated. Perhaps I could ask the city clerk to just reiterate it one more time?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. So the motion on the floor is introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending the city's master fee schedule to incorporate proposed changes in fees to become effective April 1st after the ordinance is adopted to include aquatic fees and reduce the nonprofit subcontractor lane rental fee to $15 as seen on packet page 11-1.12 of the ordinance.
And thank you for that, through the mirror, if I may. I just want to make one clarifying statement there. I think I heard you use the word nonprofit associated with the subcontractor lane rental. And conferring with the city attorney at the break, that making that differential between nonprofit and for-profit, that's not in the ordinance as it's presented currently. So the recommendation would be to just have that change to the subcontractor lane rental, which in the amendment, I'm sorry, in the attachment here is just presented as that without those qualifiers of nonprofit or profit, just to have that still remain as subcontractor lane rental. But I believe the motion was for that to be $15, not 18. And I see the maker of the motion nodding her head. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dorr?
Thank you. Given that, thank you for looking into that. That was a curiosity I had. Given that would be then decreasing for mavens and for revolutions and fitness, which is currently at $18 an hour, I do wonder if, you know, how big of a, an impact that has. And, you know, like Vice Mayor Combs said earlier, we're kind of shooting in the dark here because we don't understand all the underlying things. But it makes me wonder if, how to square this, how to square this circle to make sure things aren't being reduced in a way that will somehow make it more difficult to provide the quality of service. So it makes me almost wonder, would $16 be a way to somehow make sure that at least mavens is at the same rate, revolutions and fitness is going down just a little bit, and that they're too being brought up a little bit? But it seems like there's strong opinions.
I'm sorry, I do have a strong opinion that I do not want to do that. I believe that, I will just say no. Thank you.
Does that mean we're at an infancy? Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, so, but just to understand where Councilmember Nash is at. You are supportive of the overall, like, sort of setting it for all users, subcontractors at $15, right? And so you would be okay with, even though one of the sort of knock-on effects would be that the single for-profit entity would see its rates decrease? You're okay?
I'm fine with that, and I think that that's something that when staff and Mr. Sheperd do come back, they would, that's certainly something that they could address at that time.
So we have a motion, so now we need a second? I'll second.
Thank you. So I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Nash and a second by Mayor Taylor to introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending the city's master fee schedules to incorporate proposed changes in fees to become effective April 1st after the ordinance is adopted to include aquatics fees and reduce the subcontractor lane rental fee to $15 as seen on packet page 11-1.12. Any further city council question or discussion?
Yes, I do. I'm, given that is now an increase across the board, I'm curious from Mr. Reinhardt or from, apologies, decrease across, partial decrease, partial increase, the implications of that. Is there any more input you have on what this potential adjustment could look like?
Thank you. As we sit here, I did have the opportunity to confer with Mr. Sheperd, the operator, a little bit during the break. It remains to be seen what the impact of that would be. However, as we sit here, the operator has agreed that, you know, they could make that work, however, with the understanding that if there are substantial impacts there that, the motion itself is to come back fairly soon with another look at the fees, and so it could be addressed at that point in time.
Thank you. That makes me feel more comfortable with that proposal and also supportive of the opportunity for it to come back and for further conversation.
Thank you. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none?
Yeah, I, oh, please. Yeah, as I stated, I'm going to be voting no on the motion. Now we're even decreasing for for-profit operators. So that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Any further city council question or discussion? Nope? Okay, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with Vice Mayor Combs and City Councilmember Willison dissenting.
Thank you, everyone, for your time and patience and your input on that agenda item. I need to go back and provide a statement for item K4, and that is, and this has to do with the community funding. I did state this in the subcommittee meeting last week, and that is, I am on the board for Job Train and SMC Project. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our second hearing, L2. We are considering and adopting a resolution to amend the city of Menlo Park's general plan land use map parcel at 512 Durham Street and introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to rezone the parcel at 512 Durham Street and a portion of a parcel at 687 Bay Road for consistency with recently adopted amendments to implement programs in the adopted 2023-2031 housing element. Here to introduce this item is our principal planner, Tom Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor and council members. Appreciate this opportunity. So first, just a little bit of background on the housing element process. The city council adopted the general plan housing element on January 31st of 2023. And the housing element is a plan for the city's housing needs from 2023 to 2031 to accommodate approximately 3,000 new units in the city. The housing element also includes programs to implement some zoning changes that would allow for greater densities and expand housing opportunities throughout the community. And the city council adopted general and specific plan zoning amendments on November 28th of last year and zoning ordinance and zoning map amendments on December 5th of last year. One of the housing element programs that was implemented at that time was program H4I to create new opportunities for mixed-use development primarily in the city's existing commercial districts. And that included the creation of a new neighborhood mixed-use zoning district, which is designated as CMU, to combine a number of existing commercial and mixed-use districts into a single district to help streamline zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance and the administration of the development process. The, the new CMU zoning district emphasizes smaller-scale neighborhood-serving non-residential uses like retail stores or cafes, restaurants, similar uses to that with a potential for integrated housing. This map shows the former zoning districts that were combined into the new CMU district. And there are six different districts shown here. The parcels, six different previous zoning districts here that were combined. And these are primarily small sites typically adjacent to single-family residential neighborhoods and mainly located along the Willow Road corridor. But there are also some parcels scattered throughout. You can see along Burgess Drive, there are a few parcels, some near Gilbert and Manalto, and then a few other sites like one of the subject parcels that I'll discuss in a moment on Bay Road. Beyond this rezoning to the CMU district, there were also many other parcels that were rezoned throughout the city in different zoning districts. And with such a large and complex effort as the housing element, staff sought to complete all of the zoning amendments simultaneously. That said, with the complexity of the project, so many details and layers to that effort, staff has identified instances where the zoning updates were not fully implemented. And so I'll move into a couple of those items that we wanted to bring forward to council tonight. So two specific parcels that we're looking at are 687 Bay Road and 512 Durham Street. And those are part of existing developments that were partially rezoned to CMU as part of the actions taken late last year. The remainder of each of those sites retained the existing R1U zoning, which is single-family residential zoning. And the R1U portions of those sites are currently used as parking lots. And the 687 Bay Road site in particular has a general plan land use inconsistency with the R1U zoning. And I'll, I'll provide a map of that and describe that in a little bit more detail in a moment. Neither of the parcels were included in our housing element inventory sites, but they were intended to be part of the CMU rezoning program at the time that that was adopted. At this time, there are no redevelopment proposals for either of the sites. And the planning commission did review the proposed amendments at a January 8 meeting and recommended five to zero that the city council not adopt the amendments at this time. Several of the commissioners expressed support for the goals of the housing element, but there was a consensus that there was a request for a more extensive public engagement process particular to these rezonings. So the first parcel that I would describe is 687 Bay Road. This map shows the parcel with a little more context regarding its general plan land use. The parcel in question is outlined in black, and then the red color indicates a land use designation of commercial retail. So that's the CR that you see across those parcels. Most of the adjacent parcels have a low-density residential land use, which is represented in yellow, although there is a parcel on Bay and Hollyburn that also has a commercial retail general plan land use. This is a map that shows the existing zoning following the amendments in December. And so you can see that the parcel outlined in black has zoning that's actually split between CMU and red, which again is the neighborhood mixed-use district, and then R1U, the single-family zoning district towards the back of that parcel. The commercial residential general plan land use designation that applies to the entire site, so the previous slide here, you can see that that covers the entire site, but in terms of the zoning, an R1U zoning is not consistent with a commercial retail general plan land use designation. So there is a, an existing discrepancy there. And this is one example of a parcel that has what we call split zoning, where different portions of the parcel may have two different zoning districts. It does add some complexity to a potential development project in terms of trying to figure out exactly where the lines are, what development potential can be spread across which sites, which even potentially which regulations govern what part of what site or, or the whole site. Staff is evaluating a few other parcels that have this type of split zoning and may bring back recommendations separately for addressing those parcels in the future. This map shows an aerial view of the existing development at 687 Bay Road. So you can see here the CMU zoned portion of the site that's directly adjacent to Bay and Windermere is occupied by a building that includes office and private educational uses. And the R1U portion of the site towards the back, adjacent to Hollyburn, is a surface parking lot that serves both the, the school and the office. If adopted by city council, the CMU zoning would be applied to the entire parcel as shown in the map here. And the CMU zoning would allow up to six additional residential units to be developed on the site if, if the property were redeveloped with multifamily housing. Depending on the scope of a future redevelopment, it could include neighborhoods serving commercial uses only or mixed-use development that incorporates residential and non-residential uses. And so this is a good reminder that the CMU zoning requires neighborhood-serving non-residential uses with the option to add housing on, on a site. But the, the, the non-residential uses are the requirement and the emphasis of, of that zoning district. So we'll switch over to 512 Durham Street. This map shows the 512 Durham Street parcel with a little more context about its general plan land use. So similar to the two that we were looking at for 687 Bay Road, we have the parcel outlined in black here, sort of towards the middle of the, the map. And the yellow color indicates, again, a, a land use designation of low-density residential, whereas the parcels along Willow Road that have the red color are commercial retail land uses. And this map shows the existing zoning. So following the, the changes, the amendments that council adopted, the parcels along Willow Road generally became CMU, although I would note there are some that move a little bit further away from, from Willow Road, also part of this develop, part of this change. The zoning of the parcel at 512 Durham is currently R1U, similar to the 687 Bay Road site, which is single-family residential. And again, we have an aerial map for this site, and it shows the CMU zoned portion of the site at 812 Willow is occupied by El Rancho Market. And then the R1U portion that's outlined in yellow adjacent to it is a surface parking lot, and it provides parking and circulation for the market. So together, they are, they're two separate parcels, but they really operate as one development. If adopted by city council, the general plan land use designation for 512 Durham Street would change from low-density residential to retail commercial as shown in the updated map that's included in the staff report packet. And then, pardon me, the zoning would also be modified from R1U to CMU. And that change could provide additional opportunities for up to five, potentially five units, if the site were ever comprehensively redeveloped as part of the overall existing development. So in summary, the proposed amendments would create the potential for up to 11 more housing units between the two sites. It would provide more cohesive development opportunities. It's definitely provides some ease of zoning implementation, whereas having mixed zoning on sites can, can be a little bit trickier to navigate for planners and for the development community. It creates consistency with the existing uses that operate on the sites already, and it would ensure consistency between the general plan and the zoning of each of the sites. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt the proposed amendments. So specifically, that would be adoption of a resolution for a general plan land use map amendment for 512 Durham Street. If council were to act on that, it would become effective immediately. And then staff is also recommending the introduction of an ordinance for zoning map amendments for 512 Durham Street and 687 Bay Road, with the adoption happening at a second tentative hearing, which could be as soon as February 27th. And if that were the case, the rezonings would be effective March 28th. If council elects not to adopt the proposed amendments, council should direct staff to return with a general plan land use map amendment to low-density residential for the R1U portion of 687 Bay Road to resolve that discrepancy between that site one way or, or the other. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that presentation. And at this time, are there any clarifying questions from council before we go to public comment? Councilmember Willison?
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the presentation. So if we elect to go to amend the general plan, if we keep the zoning but to take care of the discrepancy, amend the general plan, that would count as one general plan update. I know that we have other work we need to do vis-à-vis the general plan. Can you go through what other general plan amendments? I just want to make sure we're not kneecapping our other efforts citywide.
Sure. Through the mayor, the, the general plan amendments that have happened so far this year, we've had one general plan amendment for the housing element in January. And then we anticipate that, well, if, so I would say, I guess I'll back up and say each element of the general plan can be amended up to four times per year. So we've had one amendment to the housing element. This, if adopted, would be one amendment to the land use element. And then I think we may have one development project that may need a land use, land use element amendment. And then I think we'd probably want to, for now, potentially reserve one for the environmental justice and safety elements update for consistency if needed. So for, for land, for the land use element, including these actions, it could potentially be three amendments this year that we know of.
And we're allowed to have four?
That's correct.
And that's on a calendar year?
Yes, I believe it's, resets every January 1st.
Okay, thank you.
Just to confirm on that, is it four times per element within the general plan or four times total for the general plan?
Four times per element within the general plan. So you could have, you know, four amendments to the land use element, for instance, and four amendments to the housing element, and that would be fine within one calendar year.
And so something like the environmental justice element, which, correct me if I'm wrong, touches on several different elements, each of those updates would require a separate amendment?
We would hope to batch all of the changes that would be needed for consistency with one update to the other elements as needed.
Are there any other clarifying questions? Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. So just to clarify, does this create any issues or other updates that we might not be thinking of right now, given that it's early February?
I think to the best of our knowledge, right now, in February of 2024, we are not aware of four potential, more than four potential amendments to the land use element.
But it puts us...
It would put us at three.
Three, okay. Thank you.
At this time, City Clerk Erin, can we take public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on public hearing item L2, consider and adopt a resolution to amend the City of Menlo Park general plan land use map for the parcel at 512 Durham Street and introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to rezone the parcel at 512 Durham Street and a portion of parcel at 687 Bay Road for consistency with recently adopted amendments to implement programs in the adopted 2023/2031 housing element. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press *9 now. Okay, so we currently have seven speakers. So this will be the final call for public comment on our public hearing item L2. And again, as a reminder, we need everyone to turn in their cards and raise their hands at this time for comment on item L2. And Mayor Taylor, we are currently at 10 speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Erin. At this time, and do we have any in-person speakers?
Yes, we do.
So can we take public comment at two minutes each?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we will have a total of 10 speakers. We will start with Sabithia V., followed by A.J. Behoed. One moment to set our clock.
No worries.
Okay, all set. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Subhadra. I reside on Hollyburn Avenue, which is right next to the parking lot that we were talking about, 687 Bay Road. I want to express my concern about the proposed rezoning from R1U to CMU. Our neighborhood strongly prefers to retain the zoning to R1U for some of the reasons that I would like to mention is, one, the primary concern could be a potential traffic, and this lot is a pretty unique lot. You see some of the lots are in the main road, but this Bay Road is off the main road from Willow Road, so it's primarily residential. And it's also the lot which is entering into the residential unit. So this could potentially increase traffic, and I don't think this is actually, as the planning commission said, this was probably a discrepancy when they did a CMU to an R1U. I think this was purposely kept to an R1U because it is in a residential area and it is much quieter and inside the road, considering the other commercial units. And this could potentially increase more traffic, and it can affect the safety and the concerns of the noise levels too, because if you see, the lot itself is very small, and it's not a larger lot to accommodate more commercial units as well as residential units. And I think this is one of the main reasons that it was kept to an R1U. Another significant impact could be privacy and sunlight. If you see, all of the neighborhoods there are smaller residential areas, and I don't think it would be able to sustain the scalability of having more traffic and the infrastructure too, because when more traffic, the road is pretty narrow, you're going to expect more traffic coming and going, kids would not be able to play in the road, and it's not going to be much safe for the children as well when you bring in a commercial property inside a residential neighborhood, which is primarily an inside road called as Bay Road and not a Willow Road, which is more commercial. So I think I would like you to consider all of these points, as well as what was discussed in Planning Commission, where they said there was a no motion, because this is not going to contribute to the 3,000 housing unit that you have been talking about. It's less than 0.01%, and I would like to see if you could consider all the points from us as neighbors and keep it to R1U zoning as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is A.J. Behoed, followed by David Peterson.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Ajay. I live diagonally opposite to 687 Bay Road, and I'd like to voice my concerns along similar lines as my neighbor Subhadra just did. When we first got the notice, and you know, it was done in a very, I think, December 25th was when we got the notice, whenever everyone was on vacation. It was a bit alarming to see that, you know, the city is pursuing this course of action on a very small lot. And I think it'll have a very negative impact on the character of the neighborhood. So traffic on Bay Road currently is actually quite bad. It's already, I feel, quite unsafe for our children. So I have a little kid who goes to the school, the Montessori school that's right there. And I think if the proposed zoning changes are implemented according to the rules, the owner could technically build up to 18 units, that's if they demolish the Montessori school as well. And that's going to wreak havoc in terms of parking. So by making this zoning change, it could change the incentives for the owner to, you know, try to break. So the current Montessori school, I think the lease is up to 2035 or something. So it could change the dynamics of that place, and we heavily rely on that school as well. It's not just me who's sending my kid there, there are other people too. And the other concern was, you know, the spill-over traffic on Windermere and Hollyburn, it's going to make it really unsafe for our kids to just play on those roads as well and, you know, even do something like cycling and so forth. The other concern was, you know, if the owner chooses to develop just the empty lot and leave the Montessori school untouched, that'll make parking even worse. And so I think there are no good options here. And the last concern was, you know, that if it's CMU, you can put a multi-story, right? So you can have multiple stories, and that's going to cause sunlight and, you know, privacy problems for us, because, you know, it just directly looks into the lot. So I think it would completely change the character of the neighborhood. And as Subhadra mentioned in the previous Planning Commission meeting, one of the questions that was asked was, is this contributing towards the, I think, 3,000 units that need to be added to Menlo Park? And the answer was no. So we were strongly in favor of leaving this untouched, because it's a very unique lot. It's a very small lot, I think. So it's kind of weird to try to increase density in such a place. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is David Peterson, followed by Altaf Gori. David had to leave? Okay. Is Altaf Gori here? Perfect.
Dave might join on Zoom. Hi, my name is Altaf Gori. My family lives at 1010 Hollyburn. My house directly faces the parking lot that is being considered for rezoning at 687 Bay Road. I hope the city council follows the Planning Commission's recommendation and does not allow for the rezoning of this lot. I met with employees of the Planning Division, and I was really shocked to find out that the rezoning could lead to the development of a three-story building on that lot, which is really out of character for that area, for those of you who are familiar with Flood Park neighborhood. I, along with my neighbors, have many concerns around privacy, traffic, safety, that the rezoning could lead to. My neighbors articulated some of those concerns already. I've also found the notification process lacking. Many neighbors did not receive a notification. I think there's a certain area that you receive a notification, but when something like this is, when this type of rezoning takes place, there are actually people who are at the end of the street that will be seriously impacted, but yet they receive no notification. So I hope the notification process can be improved moving forward, and I thank you for taking our feedback.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Peter Colby, followed by Susan Gibson.
Good evening. I didn't plan to speak when I came to this meeting. I just was, I remember back when Paul Colachi was a city council member, and he invited everybody to come to these meetings and be part of the process. And I just thought it's important to, you know, show up once in a while. And I noticed in this one issue on Durham Street that it's right by this grocery store, El Rancho, or whatever they call it, and it's right across from the Veterans Hospital. They're under pressure, your staff are, to find these possible places for new housing units, but this little area here is used by the grocery store for their dumpster access. That's where they bring in their produce, and they use that lot. Maybe it's not even their right to use it, but that's the delivery and dumpster access for the grocery store. And I believe this would threaten the grocery store for the community over there. The hospital has housing units they've developed for veterans. It's run by Life Moves. They are increasing housing on the Veterans Hospital grounds. So it's a hopeful sign that it's a sign of times. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Susan Gibbs, followed by Kevin Rennie.
Hi, I'm Susan Gibson. I don't know if you can see me or hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So thank you for the opportunity to comment. My family and I live at 1004 Windermere Avenue, and our house has two sides of our property that edge on 687 Bay Road and the accompanying lot. And we are strongly opposed to this rezoning. Our family has lived here for 27 years, and this is a quiet family neighborhood. This is where kids play. We walk our dog twice a day. This is, the people who move into this neighborhood move here because it's a quiet family neighborhood. This is not the right fit for high-density housing. As everyone else said, we have concerns about safety, noise, privacy, potentially blocking lighting, the traffic glut. There are times at commute hours that it takes 20 minutes to get on to Bay Road and to Willow, which is just a few blocks away. So this area is not set up to handle this kind of traffic. There's currently no specific proposal for what to do with this land. It would greatly reduce the property value for everyone in this neighborhood, because high-density housing is not what people in this neighborhood or people moving into this neighborhood want. There's plenty of areas where the high-density housing on El Camino and on Willow and other places would be welcomed and would make sense both for those building and for the area in a more urban area. But this is not a right, a good fit for our neighborhood, and I hope that you won't do something here that's just a zoning change with no specific proposal that damages our property values and does not create the kind of neighborhood that we want and chose to live in. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Kevin Rennie, followed by Patrick Mealy. Kevin, you should have a chance to unmute at this point?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff, I'm Kevin Rennie from the Willow's neighborhood. I'm in support of the housing element, but would like to focus purely on housing and not impact the current neighborhood feel of Menlo Park. I am in opposition of the proposed rezoning of these two sites. Furthermore, the proposed housing element developments are disproportionately burdened by neighborhoods, as these two were pointed out, that directly impact, that are directly impacted already by high-traffic congestions, pollution from 101. Furthermore, would like to see a second look at proposed sites such as the Sharon Heights Golf Course, the corporate center at Martian 101. Thank you so much. I yield back.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, our next speaker is Patrick Mealy, followed by a phone guest ending in 8770.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Mealy, and I live at 1004 Windermere, along with Susan Gibson. And we installed solar at quite a significant expense, and if there was a three-story building built directly behind our house, it would block, would pretty much destroy the capabilities of the solar system, which in this day and age, we all want to do our part to prevent CO2 pollution, right? So I'm more opposed to it. And also, that parking lot is used extensively by the Montessori School to have their kids play and ride bicycles and stuff all day long there. So I don't think it's an appropriate place to put a commercial building whatsoever, but thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker, again, is calling from 8770, followed by Gino Masudo, Masud, for our caller, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
Hello. Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Niti Arora, and I live in 703 Bay Road. My home directly faces the set parking lot. Along with my neighbors, me and my husband, we both strongly prefer to keep the current zoning to maintain the nice neighborhood feel. Our kids usually walk or bike to school, and if this change happens, it will definitely increase the traffic on a residential street, and it will also directly affect our privacy. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Gino Masud, and our final commenter will be Adina.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Perfect, thank you. My comments are specifically around 512 Durham. Seems like most of the comments earlier preceded me were regarding the Bay Road space. So for 512 Durham, it's basically attached to 812 Willow Road and the El Rancho Supermarket, allowing ingress and egress, ease of parking, reducing traffic. El Rancho is also a thriving member of the community. It employs a lot of folks. Nothing, and it has a long-term lease. Nothing would really change there. It's been operating as part of El Rancho, and it's part of that same business. To take that and change it into housing and would kill El Rancho's business and not allow them to operate, as I think someone mentioned earlier, I think that should be viewed as different than the Bay Road site. So 512 Durham, in my opinion, is a different situation. It also has retail right across the street from it. Also, about a decade ago, there was a reciprocal parking agreement between all three sites, both 812 Willow, the Both 812 Willow, the 512 Durham, and then the 820 to 888 Willow that you saw earlier. Have a reciprocal parking agreement between all three of them enforced by Menlo Park City, City Council. Sorry, City Attorney. So these sites all operate as one. To, to have them zoned differently, it just doesn't make sense, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker will be Adina. Adina, you should.
Okay, fine. Thank you. That just popped up. My name is Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. And I, having been closely following along with the recently concluded housing element process, I don't understand why these changes were not covered in some very, very similar changes that were done in the housing element throughout the city, acknowledging that in order to further fair housing, it is good to have the opportunities to have additional homes throughout the city. And we are really facing a severe housing shortage that has negative impacts from, for many in our communities and allowing additional housing is something that has an overall benefit for our community. You know, because of the housing shortage and the need for additional housing. The, you know, we are going to, a change is going to happen. The, because there are no immediate development proposals, this is something where there might be change in many, many years or potentially a change happening never. So this does seem to be in line with many other changes that have happened in the city and seems like a reasonable thing to do. Also having mixed use makes the community more walkable and has also improvements to the quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And that does conclude our speakers. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who provided public comment, bringing it back to the dais. And I'll start with Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So in full transparency, I I have a mind to ask that this item be continued because I don't think that residents fully in this area were aware of this proposed change. I would, and so, so I'm of that, that mind. I will, I will say just, though, I will say a couple. I'll put that out there and then, then there's a couple of things I want to say. In, in response to Ms. Levin's last comment, I completely hear you. And I will point out that if you look at the two affordable housings and projects in the city that are the furthest along and most likely to happen, they, they are both very close to these two sites. One is, as has been previously mentioned, the, the project proposed on the VA campus and the other is the, the Flood School project. And so, as I understand, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that those are the two affordable housing projects in the city that, that are most likely to actually see, see the light of day in there in the, in this neighborhood. So I do think a lot of furthering affordable and fair housing is, is very much happening, happening here. My concern has, has been that like, I, I'm not quite clear. I, I've understood staffs are the city's specific focus on this. I, I do think that in, to Mr. Smith's comment, he says, these are two separate, in the case, essentially two separate parcels acting as one. I think having a parking lot does not mean that the parcel is acting as one. And that's essentially what you have here. You have two scenarios where portions of a parcel, and we, I don't think that there's been much actual historic research and looking at like, sort of what is the history? Because if you look at those parcels, they, they are aligned and look very much like the other parcels in those residential neighborhoods. And so, these are, are very unique situations where you have these very odd, odd parcels. Where, where you have these appendages to, to, to the parcels. And again, like I said, I don't think if you have two separate parcels and there's a building across them, then I think you can say that's operating as one. But like in both cases where you have essentially a parking lot, I, I don't think it, it is really, it, it is an accurate description to say, but, but I do think that that speaks to, I think, my concern with how, how this has been, been presented. What I would say is like, I don't think that there is, again, for those portions of this, these parcels that face either Bay or Willow Road, those are now designated under CMU. And so the question is, is like whether these appendages, which are R1U, whether they get added to that or not. And I, I think that, again, given the uniqueness, and I think to Ms. Levin's point, the reason these weren't added as part of that, because I think it goes to the very oddness of them, like, right? And so, and I think the city is trying to do a cleanup of sorts, but is really not paying attention to, I think, the distinctiveness of these. And it may be the case that, that it is appropriate for a development fully on these parcels, including the parking lots. But, and nothing prohibits that by the city doing with the planning, by the city council doing what the planning commission did, which is rejecting what the staff is proposing. It just would require a specific development proposal. And, and it would, and it would require what I think is, is the actual like, sort of very detailed engagement with a developer about like, again, if they want to fully use this, this, this parcel, about like, what are going to be those impacts to those portions of this parcel that actually go into the neighborhood? And but, you know, single-family residences. And, and so, again, that's how I'm looking at this and my, my overall concern, again, like I said, I am mostly, are, are a paramount concern of mine is, is that, that there hasn't been enough neighborhood knowledge of, of this proposal. But, but like I said, I do think overall, like I'm, I'm opposed to it. I, I don't think that, that it is, it is, it is, it is right in, in this situation, like I say, to, to add these, what are clearly sort of, I think, unique lots to the CMU zoning at this time. Again, as part of a very specific proposal, development proposal, it may be the case. But I, I think that the developer, given the uniqueness of this, should have to go through all of those additional processes. And, and there, there should be that additional requirement of community engagement that comes with that to, to, to develop fully the lot under the CMU.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I had a couple of questions. One is, has there been a development proposal?
At this time, no, we have not received any development proposals for either of those sites.
Okay. And what's the standard for outreach for community members when there's a change happening to some zoning?
So for a rezoning, the, the city's ordinances require a 300-foot radius of noticing, so that would have gone to neighbors. And then we also publish a notice in the newspaper. I would say as part of the housing element itself, the 687 Bay Road site in particular was shown on a map as being completely rezoned to CMU, but the words did not reflect it. So what someone saw in a picture, maybe what they read, didn't match up. But the notices and, and the communications that had gone out throughout the housing element process for over a year would have included a map that showed the entire parcel specific to Bay Road being rezoned.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. A clarifying question, and that is, so this is trying to have consistent land use zoning. Would either, would changing the zoning either to the, from retail commercial to the RMU or to the low-density to the residential, would that change the current use and what's allowed? Or would that change what they can, people can currently do with land?
So when we put together the CMU zoning district, we were careful to make sure that we were preserving the uses that would be allowed on the sites under their, their previous zoning designations. So for instance, if, if a property owner wished to maintain the existing development on the site, you know, they could. And then if they wanted to redevelop the site to add housing, there are designated in the different uses in the CMU zoning district ways that they could incorporate, you know, a market, for instance, at, at El Rancho that would incorporate housing with that. Or for the 687 Bay Road site, there's a provision that would allow, I think there's a small portion being used as office that could go back in with an administrative permit. And then the, the school function could go in as a, it's designated under a special use through a use permit.
But essentially, it, what it does is for future development, it makes it easier, but at this point, it doesn't change anything as far as the current uses and what's, what the current use is.
Correct. I, I think this is a continuation of the spirit of the, the housing element to reduce barriers to development potential in the future if housing is desired on those sites.
Thank you.
I have a question based on that. Thank you. I have a question based on that. So say it was updated to address this inconsistency. Before whoever, say El Rancho, El Rancho Market? Before they would make any developments or changes there, would that still have to go through the same planning process? So it'd be brought up, community members could have input. What, could you explain what that would look like?
I think the process could potentially vary depending on the uses that would be proposed at the site. You know, architectural control would be one thing that would need to go through planning commission review. And then certain types of uses would require a use permit review. And so there would be potentially, I think, some discretionary component involved with a redevelopment.
Thank you. And something else about this inconsistency that would help me. So currently, both these sites that are designated R1U are parking lots for commercial sites. And so is there already, it seems like there's a base inconsistency there that they are being used not for R1U?
Right. These, these sites have operated with these R1U portions or adjacent parcels, serving as parking for quite a few decades. And so that, that has been in place for, for quite a lo- long time on both of those sites.
Councilmember Willison?
Thank you. So going back to something you said five or 10 minutes ago about outreach during the housing element process and maps that were sent out. So I know this was kind of like an oversight. So in the communications that we had seen with maps during the process, was this, were these two entire parcels, so were these weird little rectangles shown to be changed to CMU, I was gonna say MC squared, CMU?
So the, the 687 Bay Road parcel was shown, it, it, looking back at sort of presentations or staff reports or documents, the 687 Bay Road site would have been shown as completely being rezoned CMU. It wasn't until after the adoption that we were looking a little bit more closely as we started to put things into our geographic information systems, all of that, that we noticed that the 812 and, 812 Willow and 512 Durham site, which is under one ownership and has, you know, a unique situation where the parcel's providing parking and then some service delivery for the market. We realized that after the fact, so that, that particular parcel would not have been shown on, on previous maps.
Thank you. So I mean, the real policy question here is how, I guess, in other words, streamline gets overused, but how easy or hard do we want to make it in the future for someone to come forward with a development project that could either be a commercial, like a neighborhood-serving retail thing, which some neighbors might really think is cool, and or more housing. And so by keeping it R1U, we're keeping the hurdle higher and the process slower. So I think in the, for me, like the spirit of the housing element and the vision of where we're heading as a city is to enable this type of development. That being said, given these minor things, like I don't know if this is a hill I want to die on here. So that's kind of where I'm at. And like, again, if this were part of, if this hadn't have been an oversight and I don't want to take away from the incredible detailed work that you did, and I don't think any of us fault this. You know, I think it would have been part of the package, but given that it's coming like this a little clunky, I can see, I can see kind of where we're at. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, yeah. And I would just add that, again, as it relates to those portions that were designated to CMU, there is still not a high, a high hurdle. It is only the extent to which a future development wants to fully incorporate, which I believe are unique aspects of, of the parcel, which I'm pretty sure historically were actually separate parcels onto their, to, to, to themselves. And I think to Mr.'s, Ms.'s point, some mini, mini decades before any of us were in Menlo Park, started being used as, as, as parking lots. And, and so I think that, I just think that going forward, that there should be, again, given that essentially what we are talking about was, or things that were historically likely, I, I don't know. I mean, no one's actually done the research, but were single-family parcels that were attached or became parking lots for things that were on larger roads. I, I don't, like I say, think it's appropriate to, to make this, this change. Again, I, I think I and lots of people in the community are totally in board with the rezoning that happened to those portions of the parcel that actually faced Bay and Willow Road. It is the inclusion of these sort of, sort of addendums is, is I think where, where, where we have, we have the, the concern.
Yeah. And again, not going to die on this hill at all, and I'm kind of willing to let it go. I can see kind of in staff's defense or whatever, the rationale, if you do have one property owner, if I were going to buy these properties and one's facing Bay Road and then it comes with this funky thing over here and I want to, you know, maximize the development in order to create more housing or this really cool retail opportunity, we are making that harder for that property owner. So there is like a thing there. I can see the unique features of this. And like I said, I'm willing to, to do what ever needs to be done here, just to get this done. I, what I don't want to do is drag this on, but what we are doing is, is setting up a future scenario where it will be dragged on. I just want to make that clear. So we might be, we're, we're punting a problem down, we're punting a potential problem down the road, which was the exciting thing about the housing element, where we were setting this high-level thing, where we were kind of strategically looking at the city, distributing things fairly, being very thoughtful about it. And now we're kind of going back to sort of how we used to do things, which are these like tiny decisions that have like, obviously the neighbors are getting concerned and whatnot.
And, and I would just say, and totally agree with you, and again, I, but, but the only difference is that like, with regards to those other parcels, we, we sort of looked at them, like, right? Specifically, like, right, as it relates to like identifying them and looking at all the, the specific unique aspects and saying that like, this is an opportunity site or this is, should be zoned. this is an opportunity site or this is, should be zoned. Like in, in this case, again, like I say, I, I think that, um, uh, they are unique, u- unique features. And, and, and I don't think, I'll be frank, for the staff to say, well, you, you know, in a map, like, right, we, we showed it some way, but you didn't do everything you needed to do to make the change. So, um, it wasn't legally described as it should be. This, so I think to say like, oh, well, we kind of, you, you know, it was a mistake. And so that should give us some like, y- 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 you know, cover, I, I think is, I'm gonna be frank absurd, like, right? Um, it's, it's like, I'd like to go to my manager and say like, oh, I made a mistake. But like, well, let me use that as, as a, as a, as a reason to sort of, I think, make a bigger mistake. Um, and.
Yeah, I don't think anyone's, I don't know if that's what's happening here, like using it as cover or whatever, but yeah.
But, but, but I do think it is, at, at the end of the day, th- there was not a change in the zoning of this parcel. And so I think it is not great to then present that as, but the map showed this as being changed. And so somehow that legitimizes that you should change it now. Like, right? I, I find that, that, that logic really problematic. Just like I say, I find the logic of saying that like something being used as a parking lot means that the whole parcel is being used as, I mean, like, that's not, that's really not, not a parcel being used uniformly. Um, or, or at least it is uniformly in the least costly way of like, part of it essentially having nothing on it, other than asphalt and, and lines indicating that this is where cars go. Like, it'd be totally different if there was an actual structure that crossed the parcels. Then I would say like, that description is completely accurate. But that's not what's in either of these cases.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs and Councilmember Willison. Uh, Councilmember Nash. So first of all, I just want to say, um, I think that the description, that it was part of the map and all, is just helpful information, um, to just be aware of. So I think that, thank you for raising that. Um, has there been any helpful communication with the property owner of either property since those are contiguous, part of their contiguous, um, land?
Aside from the, the typical outreach, um, that we would do for, for noticing things like that? No, we haven't had any specific conversations.
But they didn't have any like, yes, we really want to do this, or no, we really don't? They?
Uh, thank you, uh, through the mayor. So just to clarify, so that one of the speakers is the property owner for, that, that spoke earlier, Gina Masood is the property owner for the, um, Durham site.
Can you, the Willow Road, can, they called for public comment?
Yes, he was the second to the last speaker.
Okay.
Just with the one who was talking about, oh, there's a long-term lease and stuff. I do, maybe some of, just a real quick question, and maybe some of the neighbors in flood can, can correct me. It, does, does that Bay Road building have like a for sale sign on it? It does, does not? Okay.
Through the mayor, I was out there today, um, and I have a photo on, on my phone. The, the Bay Road site does have a available sign. So you may have recalled the sign, it's available, I think, and went to the website, it's available for lease, but not for sale. And it's the same property owner, an architect from Portola Valley, who owns, um, the two properties in question on Bay Road.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. Councilmember Dor.
A question about the person who called in, um, who's the, the owner of the property. Um, in the communication that you shared, was it, was it obvious that no changes would have to be made? It was only by choices that the property owner would have, you know, could, if they wanted to pursue adjustments given the new zoning?
So it would have, it would have been just the, the notice that neighbors got or other property owners received. Um, I guess I would caveat that for the eight 12 Willow site, which, uh, the speaker owns as well, he would have received, uh, a letter about that site during the housing element that I think explained in more detail the situation of, um, for, for at least the eight 12 Willow site, no immediate changes, but really we're providing more opportunities to incorporate housing on the site in the future if you so wish.
Thank you. Where, where I am in on, on this is, um, you know, thinking about our housing element and the idea of affording housing, it was helpful to see too, that the maximum units that we proposed in each site is five units or six units. Um, and that all this is doing by changing the zoning is addressing an in, uh, discrepancy and inconsistency and creating an avenue for a, uh, an owner to move forward if they so chose, completely voluntarily. Um, and there would still be discretionary moments, um, to help shape what any developments might look like. Um, I would be supportive of this update, um, but I'm still curious to hear more about what other folks in the dais are thinking.
I, I just want to add on that, like, and I know that you and Mr. Smith had this exchange. The, the review is, is very different when we talk about discretionary, like architectural control. It's, it's very different. Um, and, and there's a lot more requirement for public engagement. There's a lot more process. And so I, I think to say that there is some discretionary, like, review here is, is again, I, I think again, not to sort of paint an accurate picture of the situation. They're, they're, they're almost entirely different processes. And again, like I say, given the unique aspects, again, we're not talking about the portions on Bay or Willow, but given the unique aspects of those parcels at the back, I think having to go through those additional processes have a lot of value. But it is not, it is by far not the same. And so I don't think it's fair to sort of say that like, oh, there's still this discretionary review.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Understood that it is different. And, um, you know, I, I can also, I'm curious for more dialogue, uh, on the dais, because I am also amenable to understanding that, you know, maybe it would be helpful for there to be a, a, a bigger, um, mode for community members to be involved if something were to come forward that would address, you know, uh, a development that would include these additional parcels.
I actually have a, a question for staff, just a moment. Um, and that is, if, if, on the recommendation you said for next steps, it says, if not adopted, council should direct staff to return with a general plan land use map amendment for single family zoning consistency at six eighty seven Bay Road. So that's just for the one parcel? So you don't have a recommendation for the other one if we don't support the staff recommendation?
So for that particular parcel on Bay Road, um, there is the, the inconsistency between the R1U portion of the lot and the commercial, um, the land use designation that's in place. For five 12 Durham, that one actually has consistency right now. It is, uh, low density residential land use and single family zoning. And so, um, it could remain that way essentially if, if council didn't want to act on it.
Thank you. And, and just for the record, I'm, I'm not in support of, of, of changing anything to the, um, five, six eighty seven Bay Road. Very familiar with the area for the past 50 years. And I don't believe that adding any type of commercial there, there will be helpful. If the current owners of the parcel, and I don't remember this exact address there, wants to change the uses there, that's one thing. But to completely change the zoning there, I'm, I'm not supportive of. So I would be supportive of the staff recommendation, if not adopted, and what's listed there. I do support that. Um, making the zoning consistent, because I understand that being just some of the challenges with the history of zoning in Menlo Park and trying to make things consistent. Yes, Councilmember Willison.
Um, Mr. Smith, um, so going back to the general plan amendments in the four year, um, what would happen if, God forbid, we had to do like a fifth amendment? Like what, what are the penalties? What does that look like?
So I would turn that question over to our city attorney, Doherty.
I, I've actually never dealt with that. I've never had a city try to do that. Uh, my guess is, and I can confirm at a later time, but that the amendment would be invalid as a matter of law.
I have a clarifying question. Earlier you stated that you have four amendments per land use.
Four amendments per, per element of the general plan.
And how many elements do we have in the general plan?
Thank you. So there's the circulation element, the housing element, the land use element, and we have our open space conservation and noise element, which is a combined element, which you'll see an update to the safety element later this year. And then we'll have our new environmental justice element.
So that's four times four, which is 16, or no? You said four per element? Bless you.
That's right. It's four per element in the calendar year.
Okay.
Yes, but just through the minute, but it's not, it's not cumulative. It's per, it's truly per element. So.
Per element, okay. Thank you.
Uh, along those lines, there's the potential, if I may, there, there's a potential to, to, um, bundle, uh, land use elements, you know? So, um, if the council were to choose the second option of resolving the inconsistency by changing the general plan land use designation, we don't need to come back next, next meeting for that. We can kind of potentially bundle that with any other change over the coming months. But I do believe it should be resolved this year. I feel strongly about resolving that inconsistency this year.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy.
I, I, I will add to that, that where there is a discrepancy as to allowable density on a lot between the general plan and the zoning ordinance, the general plan prevails. So by not adopting the zoning ordinance tonight, if there is an interest in changing the allowable density on site based on the current land use designation, um, that, that is something you, you will want to do. Otherwise, the land use designation prevails.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs.
So can I, um, I only, I think I minimally followed this, this discussion. But so I, I was gonna make a motion if needed, because the council has to act in a way here, right? Or could it not act here and then just the status quo remains? Like, are you, my, my question, to be simple, is do you need a motion here? If, if the council wants to act in a way contrary to staff recommendation?
I think we're looking for, uh, potentially direction. Um, if, if we are to come back with, uh, a general plan land use amendment for single family, low density residential, I should say, on six eight seven Bay Road, then we could follow up at a future meeting with that. But I think we're looking for that, that direction this evening, one way or the other.
And that's not a formal motion. Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 no. Um, um, okay, I, I'm supportive of that, 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 that direction. But obviously I'm, I'm just one voice up here.
I am also supportive.
I'm supportive.
So to clarify for the residents watching, that you're getting what you want. Um, we're not changing the zoning, it's staying R1U, which means that we have to make it consistent with our general plan, which is why we have to update the general plan. So, um.
But again, to be, to be clear, only for that back portion of the parcel. The zoning has already changed for those front, those, the front portion of both of those parcels. So.
At this time, Ms. Heron, do I need to close the public hearing?
Yes, please.
Right. I will close the public hearing on item L2. And move to M, our regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The regular business item this evening is M1, adopt a resolution to amend the, the salary schedule effective February 25th, 2024. Here to introduce this item is our administrative services director, Brittany Mello.
Good evening, city council. So before you tonight is a salary schedule amendment, um, with four proposed changes. So by way of background, the city council retains the sole authority to amend the salary schedule. Modifications are brought really on an as-needed basis to incorporate new classifications, changes to existing classifications, or changes to assigned salary ranges for classifications. And the salary schedule was la- brought, last amended as of November 19th, 2023. So the recommendation before you, it are making four amendments. This includes adding two new classifications to the salary schedule, the emergency preparedness coordinator and the nutrition services coordinator, and correcting two errors, one in the program assistant salary range and one in the property and court specialist salary range. The new position for emergency preparedness coordinator will serve as a dedicated and expert resource for the city focused on emergency preparedness and will help coordinate with and connect all the available partner resources. The FTE, or the full-time equivalent, was approved as a service level enhancement in the fiscal year 2223 budget. Additionally, the city council identified emergency preparedness as a top priority for fiscal year 2324 at its annual goal-setting workshop in March 2023. Adding the classification to the salary schedule will allow the recruitment process to begin for this position. The second new classification we're looking to add to the salary schedule is the nutrition services coordinator. This is a supervisory position that will be dedicated to enhancing nutrition services, planning and preparing nutritious meals for participants at the senior center and youth center, and providing educational services related to nutrition, health, and wellness to our program participants. The FTE was approved on December 5th, 2023 to support the new Bellhaven Community Campus opening and the operations. And adding the classification again will allow recruitment to begin. There are two corrections. Um, this dates back to an error included in the July 16th salary schedule, um, which erroneously increased the range for both the program assistant and the property and court specialist position. Uh, the amendments before you would correct that dating back to July 16th. Um, due to the timing of salary step increases and some folks already having reached the top step in their range, there was minimal impact to the employees, um, in these positions. Impacted staff have been notified and payroll will work with these employees to process the corrections pending city council's approval this evening. And with that, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mello, for the presentation and bringing it back to the dais. Are there any clarifying questions from city council before we take public comment? Ms. Heron, can you take public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on regular business item, M1, adopt a resolution to amend the salary schedule effective February 25th. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landliner cell phone, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on regular business item M1. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you. And at this time, if there are no questions from city council members, uh, is there a motion and a second?
I'm happy to motion.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by city council member Dower and a second by Vice Mayor Combs to adopt a resolution to approve the following amendments to the city of Menlo Park salary schedule. One, add a new classification to the salary schedule of emergency preparedness coordinator. Number two, add a new classification to the salary schedule for nutrition services coordinator. Number three, correct an error in the program assistant classification salary range. And number four, correct an error in the property and court specialist classification salary range. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron.
Thank you, City Clerk Heron. Our next agenda item is N informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council in staff's efforts to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask questions on any of the informational items. City Clerk Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items N1, city council agenda topics. N2, update on the Coleman Ringwood Avenue transportation study. N3, update on the city hosted events for 2024. Or N4, annual city council goal setting workshop on March 2nd. If you are participating in person, please complete a speaker card at that back table. Return to me at the clerk's desk. Participating virtually, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine now. Currently have one speaker, so this will be the final call for public comment on our informational items N1 through N4. Okay, so our speaker will be Kevin Rennie. And Kenny, if you can let us know which item you are speaking on, please.
Madam Mayor, city council staff. I'm speaking on the Coleman Ringwood project that's been ongoing. Just want to reinforce the importance of it and thank the council and staff for looking at it and partnering with the San Mateo County. It's been, I guess, as I've learned, 20 years that they've been trying to work on this. I live in the Willows neighborhood. I have two little kids. We ride our bikes most days to Lower Laurel. I just want to reinforce the importance of bike safety in general. I just read today in the Palo Alto online, another cyclist was fatally killed at a Rosadero and Foothill. So I think it's even more pertinent that Menlo Park takes additional action in providing bicycle infrastructure and safety in any means possible. And I do see that happening throughout Menlo Park, but I encourage greater investment and attention to it. Thank you, thank you for the time. I yield back.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I'd actually like to also make a brief comment on into and just saying that like I have not been as closely following the Coleman Ringwood project, but somewhat closely. And I do think that, I mean, the extent to which there is some possibility or some option, whether it's a pilot or something more permanent, of completely blocking off Coleman to vehicular traffic is just something that I think that we need to be prepared. Because I know some people who have participated in the process, at least earlier on, and did not know that this was now something that was a possibility. And so again, like it's a major access point to get to MA, to get to lower campus. And I do think we need to be very thoughtful about that as an option, the extent to which. And I don't know where it is exactly, but obviously it's listed in this report. And I've had some residents reach out to me about it. And so I wanted to share that feedback.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Are there any other comments? Councilmember Wilson?
Thank you. Actually, wanted to just comment on N3, which is about city hosted events. And this is something I have brought up before. And then I think staff was maybe gonna look at bringing something or having some discussion about it. And then, I don't know. I just, I still think we need to have a broader discussion about what events we hold and who they're serving and where our blind spots are. And the one that always jumps out at me is Breakfast with Santa. I hate to say it, and I don't mean to be, I'd love us to be additive, but I find it problematic that the city is hosting a Breakfast with Santa. And I would love us to transition that to a community organization that may be more appropriate to host that. We can still have it at our Yaga and potentially like partner with it. But I'm just, I'd like to have a bigger discussion about these events and how we're deciding what events to have and whatnot. So I'm not sure if that's direction. I'm seeking support for direction to have staff come back. This is something I've been bringing up, I think, for a while, but it continues to kind of gnaw at me. So that's that.
I would say I'm supportive of the idea of like exploring, of having like a discussion. As I've said in the past, I'm, it's to me about being additive. I will say as someone who attends essentially all of these events, they are incredibly popular. Breakfast with Santa fills up all of the slots. And these are Menlo Park community folks. And so, and obviously you were at the tree lighting. There was like tons and tons of people everywhere. The, I don't know if this is good to say, but the Easter egg hunt people were double parking on Bay Road in places they shouldn't have been parking. It was a massive amount of people. And so again, I'm open to that discussion. As I said, I would like to, and to your point, I think it's correct because I think there was a desire to see more things and we're seeing some of those things. And so I think that that's completely like valid. I don't see anything that's new here. And for me, there is a desire to see things that are new. But again, like I remain supportive of this programming. It is something that gets, again, people tend to like a lot. But I would like to see more and to be more inclusive. And I appreciate that like if being more inclusive means that we have to make some trade offs, then that's fine, but I want to see those like trade offs, like, right? And have that discussion.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
I would like to support it as well, the idea as well. And also especially the idea of transitioning some events to other partners and then figuring out how that supporting relationship, partnership works.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? City Manager Murphy?
Yes, I just, looking at the staff report, there is a reference to something coming back. I think that was more relayed specifically to a mini grant program. So I think whether it's something that's involving funding, because we've got some other questions about funding that are being discussed as well. So I think if it's a matter of re, what I'm hearing from more than three council members, a desire to talk about this more, it would just be a matter of trying to figure out when we have time to bring it back. It's something that could be added to a list, have to work with the mayor on what comes back. But is it a matter of, is this similar to the earlier discussion? Is the council looking to be able to have a discussion amongst yourselves without much prep from staff ahead of time? Or are you looking for staff to do research, propose something? So that might be helpful for me. If it's more about the council having time to talk amongst yourselves?
I think yes.
I'm seeing some head nods. Okay, great, that's helpful.
Thank you. Councilmember Dohr?
I just want to echo support for an additive conversation here.
Thank you. The next agenda item is city manager report.
Yes, thank you. So I do have a few items. And maybe I'll start with just recognition of an event that I was not able to attend this past Saturday. I was out of town, but I did hear good things about the Black Liberation event held at the Bellhaven Branch Library. Great turnout, great feedback from those I know attended. So I just wanted to extend a thank you to the staff and community members that worked on the event. So thanks for that. And then continuing with the theme of thanks, we wanted to thank the CERT volunteers. Menlo Park Fire Protection District graduated a new class of CERT volunteers and the city was able to coordinate with the fire districts to activate those CERT volunteers during recent power outages to be able to walk the neighborhoods with folks on locations that were without power and to check in with residents. So we're very thankful for the CERT volunteers and thankful to the coordination with the community and with the fire district. So then the two other things I'd like to draw attention to, one is this council's upcoming goal setting workshop on Saturday, March 2nd, here in the council chambers. But the thing I'd like to focus on is we're still, we're seeking input from the community. And there's an online open forum for that with the deadline of February 23rd. We're trying to get that input so that it, aspects of it could be synthesized and presented to the council ahead of the workshop. So that's running through February 23rd. And then the last two things, we are running some surveys. One survey related to the city's aquatics program. Mr. Reinhardt referenced that earlier this evening, so that survey's still live. And the second survey is on the city's comprehensive shuttle program study. So a lot of good community events, community activities, and opportunities for public input on various city programs. So with that, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Murphy. The next agenda item is city council member report outs. Are there any reports from city council members since our last meeting on January 23rd? Start with Councilmember Dohr.
Thank you. This weekend, was really grateful to have Commander Dixon and Commander Lau and some officers come out to St. Beat's Church where we met with over 100 residents in Sharon Heights. Thanks also to the Sharon Heights Community Association for helping draw folks together. And we had a really helpful conversation about community safety and a few recent burglaries that had happened in the neighborhood. And it was helpful to get some feedback from the commanders about what was going on. And they shared, you know, tips on how to protect your homes and your neighbors. And so just encourage folks to be aware, to talk with your neighbors. We also had a chance to talk as a community and get some input and excited to keep that door open for folks to continue sharing input about opportunities to expand neighborhood watch programs, volunteer neighborhood watch programs, and also to explore automatic license plate readers in greater depth. As we talked about in September, there was some request for more information from the police chief to come back to share with us. And so those are some things on the mind from the community after that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
Okay, yeah, I had to. I wanted to thank Mayor Taylor for joining me for one of my weekly office hours at Cafe Zoe. I like to say that like she brought lots of residents out. That is not exactly what happened. But we had a good, long conversation, just the two of us. And so, and then for my other report out, I have visuals. Judy, your one job. This, I got this past Thursday, opportunity to spend some time with the Youth Advisory Committee, YAC, is what they're called. And so I like to say it's a really amazing group of young people throughout the city. I was quite impressed. They are working on two projects, Flea Market. And the Flea Market is March 24th, right? And it is at the library, so please make sure you come out and support. And it's an opportunity for businesses and for kids who do crafts to sell. And so, and then their other project is Arbor Day. They're working on Arbor Day project, and that is their main project. But really great, we had some pizza. And so since, I guess, they were like, oh, the vice mayor visits, we get pizza. And so they were like, yeah, I should come to all the meetings. Maybe they get more pizza. But it was really, really great opportunity to spend some time with them. And they talked about as part of their obligations or duties, they have to come to council meetings. And they talked about that experience of coming to a council meeting and seeing how people were really passionate about the things that came before, before the city. And so, yeah, so it was really, really great, great, great time all around. And thank you, thank you, Judy, for the audio visual assist.
Thank you for the report out. Great photo, by the way. Are there any other report outs? All right, well, this meeting is adjourned.